Okay, we'll get started. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting April 19, 2021. It's 5:01 PM and I'll just read a statement here, due to COVID-19 and state of the emergency, public participation will be offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to a URL address, web address, and that web address is provided on today's meeting agenda. And that meeting agenda can be found at the MBD's website, which is mbdwater.org. Or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 87549308325. And all of that information that I just read is all included on today's agenda on the Merrimack Village District website, mbdwater.org. And as always, as a courtesy, Merrimack TV is recording this meeting and will be posted to their website at a later date. So with that, the next thing we can do is the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll let the MBD office take the lead on that.
What do you lead up?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic. All right, great. We'll just do a quick roll call, just for the commissioners to tell us where they're zooming in from today. I'll start, Don Preventura, I'm at my home at Six Worsman Heights. Wolf?
Wolf on showing at my house and for conservation drive in Merrimack, and I'm alone.
Great. John?
John Lyons, 25 Windsor Drive.
And Paul?
Paul McGlaughlin, 31 Peter Road.
All right, great. So with that being done, we can move into, first thing on the agenda is the Finance and Human Resource Review. Michelle Holton can fill us in on any information?
Okay.
Michelle?
Thank you. I don't know if everyone saw the email around four o'clock. I found a revision to a February entry that I went ahead and posted and I provided updated revised financials with the email, but the basic impact, the total income line is still the same, but we had 28,000 move from domestic down to mercantile and about 21,000 from domestic to meter charges. It was just simply a change in the spreadsheet that picked things up incorrectly and the systems, CUSI or billing system and QuickBooks tied out to the bottom line. But when I was reviewing, I noticed that meters, meters were off for the quarter and they're such a consistent item that we looked into it further and found the error. So we just put in a couple of extra steps for us to take to kind of check against the prior year for a reference point, as well as when I'm reviewing to kind of look a little bit further into the detail on the entries. So that was made and with that, we're still overall, we're three quarters through the year, so we're 75% through the year. Our revenues are at 73.1%. So obviously, the meters, hydrants, sprinkler charges, you know, being steady and strong have helped to kind of at least keep us on track, hopefully to make budget for this year. We've also had some entrance fees, line 40413. So hoping for a strong few months coming up. We already are ahead of last year's April by about $10,000 or $12,000 and we still have a couple of weeks of miscellaneous billing to do. And we have been seeing that with all the restrictions being lifted, particularly like the mercantile retail commercial, that's, we're seeing that bounce back. You know, the schools are still a bit unpredictable, that piece of mercantile.
Michelle, can I, can I interject here? I just wanted to point out for the record, Ken joined us in at, I think it was 5:04. Ken, just to do a roll call, can you tell us where you're calling in from?
Ken, can you? Yes, I'm from my house at 19 Jake's Lane, Merrimack.
Okay, thanks a lot. Go ahead, Michelle, sorry about that.
Oh, whatever. So we're at 73.1% of revenues. Expenses were at 60.7% compared to last year. We are just 1.13% less in revenues, although last year's number against the budget was at 79%. And we're off higher by 7.17% on the expense side. And those were percentageized, it was pretty in line with where the budget was, but obviously this year's budget is a larger budget. So overall, right now, we're showing a net ordinary income of $510,000 versus almost 712 last year. So as we've said, we're keeping an eye on the revenues to see how they're coming in, any expenses that we have some flexibility about either when or if we purchase this year. You know, we're just kind of holding off on what we can and seeing hopefully that as things are opening up, that the water sales will fall in line. There are certain things that we've previously discussed on the income side that, you know, they aren't going to have a bounce back this year, but we will be resuming more of our ordinary operations come July 1st. As far as, sure.
Michelle, you, you made it sound a little bit as if, you know, hopefully we're gonna make budget. I mean, as, since we're not a pro, you know, for budget organization, it doesn't, you know, the bottom line as far as like the, 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 not the bottom line, the top line, as far as our revenue goals aren't really a goal for us, right? Just to clarify that. We're not being measured by making more revenue every year. What we may be being measured by is the bottom line, which is obviously the net income, right? So since our cost is actually trailing in percentage versus our revenue, even though it's lower than the budget is calling for, well, we're actually in pretty good shape, unless I'm missing something.
No, I mean, especially considering everything that's gone on this last year, between the drought and the COVID situation. But as we've discussed before, we build, we build the budget as a bottom line budget to cover the expenses that we anticipate we may need. But we also have goals for capital reserve contributions. So while we build the budget to, off the revenue budget to offset just to the expense budget, our actual goal would be to have a contribution both from the revenue side and the expense side, perhaps making a little bit over budget and being under expense that would give us the surplus to be able to make those contributions. So, you know, ideally going forward, we want a model that will, will help us be able, you know, to reach our capital reserve goals as well as our fund balance goal.
I guess my point is, it sounded, it sounded fairly, fairly, fairly bleak, fairly negative, the way, the way you put it out there as far as us maybe hopefully meeting our budget or making our budget, but since our expense side, unless we're tremendously under recognizing anything on the expense side, since our revenues, you know, are, what is, what was it, 73% or something like that, right?
73%, yeah.
Right? And our cost side is at 60.7 of the budget. We're not, we're not doing too bad, right?
No, no, but we, you know, we do have some things that, some capital purchases that, you know, may be made in the fourth quarter that are budgeted. We'll also have our inventory adjustment that will come in, that could range in the $60,000 to $75,000 area. But just in general, you know, like I said, ideally, yes, we have the budget that, the revenue budget that ties in with the expense budget. But our sort of broader goal is for us to be beyond that to a degree as well as under on the expense side is usually the combination that we've had that allows us to make the capital reserve.
Which we are right now. We're, right now, we have a half a million surplus and the year's not over. So that's just, I just wanted to put that in perspective.
Sure.
There's some seasonality there too. I mean, if you look at it compared to last year, we're only off $34,000. So I'm expecting, you know, we'll have some uptake here as we get into the summer month.
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate that the next few months, and then obviously going into the new fiscal year, we'll see things get sort of back to our regular mode more so going forward. On the expense side, there aren't any items that are off budget that we haven't already touched base on, but if anyone has any questions on a particular line item, please let me know. As far as the bank balances, I just did want to mention, we'll see these changes in April, but after the meeting, the annual meeting, we did make the $448,000 capital reserve transfers. We also had the Wells seven and eight iron and manganese treatment plant loan from a number of years back. That came in, that was over $260,000. So I have then went ahead and transferred back a couple of the cash flow transfers that we had done to cover Turkey Hill and two, three, seven and eight while we were getting DES set up for the ACH payment process to make that a little bit quicker turnaround. When they were doing checks, sometimes there would be lags. So we were covering up some contractor payments for short terms when we needed to from the operating account, but now that's gonna all, at least the 500,000, it's gonna come, come back into the operating account since we transferred out those other sums. So you'll just see a change when we get through to April.
Right.
Anyone have any other questions?
Everybody good? Okay. So I guess, um, I guess that's everything, right? Michelle, you don't have anything else? Talked about the bank account summary as well?
If anyone has any questions on anything there, I'm just letting you know some things that'll change in April, but all the accounts are reconciled and those are the balances as of March 31st.
Okay. That's good. If no one else has any questions, we can move on.
Okay.
All right, looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, first item on the regular agenda is the selection of Chair, Vice Chair and Personal Liaison for 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Do we have any nominations for, I guess, what do we start with Chair?
Don, I nominate you for Chair.
All right, there's one nomination. Do I need a second on this? I'm trying to remember how this process goes, I believe. I think that's the case.
If we need it, I'll second that.
Yep.
All right. So nomination by Ken, second by Paul. Are there any other nominations for anyone else for the Chair position?
No.
Seeing none, I believe we can put that to a vote. We can go roll call. I'll start with Ken.
Yes, for Don.
Paul?
Hold on.
John?
I'm in favor.
And Wolf?
I'm in favor.
Great. I, I think I'll abstain. So that's 401 and I graciously accept your nomination and hope we can continue on doing great things for MBD. All right, great. So next is the position for Vice Chair. But here are any nominations for the Vice Chair position?
I nominate John.
Where's the end on this?
Just to rain on the.
The year.
I'll nominate Wolf if he'll do it.
All right, so we got two nominations. Do we have any seconds on either of those?
Second on Wolf.
You have a second on Wolf? Do we have a second on the nomination for John?
Yeah, I'll second on the nomination on John.
Yeah, Paul.
All right, so we got first and seconds for John and Wolf. There are no more nominations. We can, I think, vote on them individually. And I think the first one that was made was John, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know how this is gonna play out, but we'll see. All right, all those in favor.
Like, seriously, withdraw.
All those in favor of John for, well, first of all, does John accept the position if, if?
No, I can't do that. I can barely do this. I can't do that. I'm sorry.
And John, that's okay. I, you know, I, I think it's helpful that sometimes you, you drag us down to the, to the, you know, to the goal line here and I wanted to give you the option to do that in the future, but I fully respect that. I didn't, I didn't warn you of my nomination and I respect that you have a business to run.
I thought you were joking.
I don't know, I was serious.
I appreciate your confidence in me, but honestly, that is not something I'm prepared to accept. I.
And that's okay.
If you're willing to do it, all respect in the world, my friend.
I appreciate that.
All right, so then we're back to, we got Wolf as the nomination for Vice Chair. If there are no other nominations, we can go ahead and do a roll call. Do I hear any other nominations? If not, then we can go with, who is it? I think Ken, did you make the nomination? No, Wolf did. Go ahead, Wolf.
No, John made the nomination.
John made the nomination. All right, John, how do you vote for Wolf as Vice Chair?
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, that's affirmative for John. Paul, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And myself, I as well. Wolf?
I will abstain.
Okay, so that passes 401 with Wolf abstaining. So basically, we got the same thing as we had last year with Wolf as Vice Chair, myself as Chair, and now we need nominations for Personnel Liaison.
Let me, Paul.
Was that a nomination for Paul as Personnel Liaison from?
He wants to do it. He can have it. I didn't even do anything last time. I have no idea what this position entails, to be quite honest.
I'll let him be, Paul.
We got, so we got, we got a nomination and a second for Paul as Personnel Liaison. I think that was nominated by John and second by Wolf. If there are no other nominations.
If he wants to do it.
Then we can, we can do a roll call if Paul is willing to accept that, that position.
If it entails all the duties that John just said, then yeah, I'll accept it.
Well, the duty is, just to clarify, the duty really is to, to interact with, with Ron and do the annual review of Ron. So there is, there's certainly a duty responded, related to it.
Yeah, I'll accept. I'd also say if there was a, with staffing, if there's a, if there was an issue or something, there's an avenue for the staff to talk to the commissioners as well, so.
Right. All right, great. So no further comments. I guess we can go ahead and move that to a vote. So I'll start with John, since you made the nomination. How do you vote for Paul as Personnel Liaison?
Gratefully in favor.
In favor. Wolf is the second.
In favor.
And Ken?
In favor.
And myself in favor as well. Paul, you wanna vote for this?
No, I'll be abstaining.
All right, so that passes 401 with Paul abstaining and Paul is the new Personnel Liaison for 21, 22 fiscal year. All right, great. So no further questions on any of that. I think we're all set to move on and next on the agenda is, is Jamie from Emery and Garrett. He's gonna be talking about.
Sorry to throw a wrench in here, but we did start, Michelle, before you head out. Last year, we started that Finance Liaison role. I wasn't sure if we voted that in place or if that's just something we.
That was more informal. The, the auditor suggested that we choose someone on the board who was willing and able to just sort of be a contact point for finance questions, some additional review. So we hadn't, that wasn't something that we were formally voting on.
Okay.
Are you wanting to continue in that role?
If this, if this helped, it didn't that regard, that's actually something I could participate in. So if you need help with something, I'd be happy to help with that.
Yeah, why don't we do that, switching that over? Everybody agrees. It's, it's, I'm a big fan of switching that, you know, to other people frequently, so just to, to make sure there's no, no blindness developing.
Sure.
Do we, do you remember if we voted on that last time when you were?
I don't. That's why I brought it up. I really don't.
Yeah.
No, I think.
I'm not sure if it was voted on or not, but it may have been a general consensus. So it can't hurt to vote on it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have.
To make it clean.
Okay.
Okay.
So I nominate John. Again.
All right, so John is nominated as, what, what is the position? Finance?
Yeah, Finance Liaison.
Finance Liaison. Do I have any other nominations or questions, comments on that? If not, then we can go ahead and proceed with the vote. I'm not sure if we needed a second on that or not, but let, let, let somebody second it, just so we have it officially in case we need to. Does anybody wanna second John?
Second it.
Financial Liaison, second by Ken. Okay, good. So nomination by Wolf, second by Ken. So we'll do a roll call on that. Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
And Ken?
Yes.
Paul?
Vote aye.
Myself, I as well. And John, do you wanna vote on that?
I'll abstain.
All right, so we got John as the Finance Liaison that carries 401 with John abstaining on that one. Good call, Wolf. Good thing you bring that up. All right, Jamie, I believe you're, you're up next. So you have the floor. If there's no other questions, we can, we can have you discuss your items. Looks like you got three items to talk about. Well, six, the Brownfields proposal for 69 Wilson Hill Road and then well nine.
Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Yeah, so I thought we, you know, the last meeting we had, which was good, we discussed the need to prepare a letter that would be submitted by the Chairman of the Commissioners to the Town Selectmen, requesting consideration that Brownsfield program be applied to the Merrimack Industrial Metals. And if you all recall, Merrimack Industrial Metals, which is located near well six, was the responsible party for contaminating well six. And that project site was subsequently orphaned. It was investigated. The owners went bankrupt and the project site was then left kind of in a dormant stage. And what we're concerned about is that in that dormant stage, there's nothing happening that would improve the water quality and ever get us back to the possibility of using well six again as a water supply source. We also know that the Industrial Metals Facility was not only responsible for VOC contamination, but now since we've been taking some samples out of MBD six, that there's a likely contribution of PFOS as well from that facility. So what I did was draft up a letter and, Don, I put your name at the end of it as a signature. And I just thought it might be reasonable if it's okay with you. I'll just read that letter real quick so everybody hears the language in it. And then I'd like to have the board consider and vote to have that passed on to to the town. So I wrote, Dear Selectmen or Select, Select Persons, on behalf of the MBD, reaching out to the Merrimack Select Persons for you to consider the possible use of Brownfield's funding available from the New Hampshire DES and other agencies to assess the current level of groundwater contamination at the former Merrimack Industrial Metals site in Merrimack and to potentially remediate that site. The MBD's Groundwater Consultants EDGI, GZA, has a task order contract with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to perform environmental consulting. Several months ago, the DES reached out to us about their thoughts on potential sites for using Brownfield's fund that New Hampshire was, that the New Hampshire DES was awarded by EPA. So in other words, DES has received funding from EPA and said, give us some sites. We'd like to know what sites are out there. The EPA defines a brownfield as a property which expansion, redevelopment or reuse of a property may be complicated by the presence or potential presence of a hazardous substance, pollutant or contaminant. Brownfield sites vary in historical site use and can include old mills, former gasoline stations or industrial facilities. But an important aspect of the Brownfield site is that the property is abandoned and lacks financially viable owners, which is the case here. At the Brownfields program in New Hampshire is considered an important economic development initiative because cleaning up and reinvesting in Brownfield properties can facilitate job growth, increase local tax base and utilizing existing infrastructure, reduces development pressures on open land and improves the environment. The MIM with Merrimack Industrial Metals site has the potential to be a Brownfield site. The contaminated MIM site has remained orphaned, abandoned since 2014 and contamination monitoring remediation has been completely inactive. As you may recall, the source of groundwater contamination that caused the public water supply well, MBD six, to be taken offline by the Merrimack Village District was derived from the MIM site. The MBD is very interested in getting this site cleaned up and mitigated against further and continued groundwater contamination emanating from this location. If the remediation and cleanup efforts were fully successful, the use of production well, MBD six could then be reconsidered. Basically, the DES leads the Brownfields program for the state of New Hampshire and they've indicated that the site to be considered for a funding award by New Hampshire DES would need the following. A strong interest expressed by the town that they want environmental issues addressed at this site and that the site can be redeveloped. A statement from the town that access to the property to perform any environmental work would be granted. Conceptual plan or vision for redevelopment of the property and a work scope from an environmental firm to investigate and remediate the property. Upon an expression of interest in the town of Merrimack, the DES will provide a review of the funding options available. The benefits to the town of Merrimack could include the following. Brownfield's grant funding would assist with the remediation and monitoring of groundwater contaminants derived from the former MIM site that caused adverse impacts, contamination of the former well six. The Brownfields program will offer liability protection for any future property owners. If Brownfield's program can provide a covenant not to sue that would be issued by the Department of Justice to provide liability protection for investigation, cleanup and redevelopment activities. Remediation could revitalize a contaminated property for future development with the possibility of creating new jobs and tax revenue. Continued monitoring the site will help to assess the source of PFOS in the act for proximal to the form of production well, MBD six, in which is broke. If the town of Merrimack is interested in pursuing the Brownfields program, the MBD would be pleased to assist with facilitating the discussion with the DES. All technical work done under the federal Brownsfield program requires a technical lead known as a qualified environmental professional, which is the role that our consultants can provide. which is the role that our consultants can provide. In this role, MBD could develop the technical documents for approval and execute the investigation or medial activities necessary in the path to site redevelopment. To move this forward, the town of Merrimack would need to issue a letter of interest to the DES such that a Brownsfield designation of the MIM site can be considered by DES. The next step would then be to meet with the DES Brownfields program representatives to have an informal discussion about the MIM site, potential redevelopment options, and to hear from them about the current opportunities for New Hampshire DES assistance. On behalf of the MVD commissioners, we would be happy to discuss this with you further if you have any questions. Very truly yours, the Merrimack Village District. So I just wanted to read that kind of its entirety because it does obligate the MVD to certain things. But in my view, this is a no brainer. It's something that you, if if there's funding available and there's an opportunity to clean that up and make it safer and, you know, improve the environment. There's really nothing to lose. So I thought this is a good first step and you know, happy to talk about it. And I think, Don, you can modify it as you wish or the commission. But if you would be willing to vote, I think to move this forward, I think that would be helpful and and, you know, useful.
Yeah, the one thing I would think is, I don't know, maybe if Ron, do you want to add your signature to the letter as well? Maybe to just give it a little bit more. You know, credibility coming from superintendent in the chair as well, maybe?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think that would be good. I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Help me out with that. Well, six is well, six is the one over on one oh one A, right?
Yep.
Yes.
So hang on.
Behind where the old movie theater used to be.
That's right. Okay.
Yep. Yep. It's a high yielding well. It's probably your highest yielding well in the in the district.
It's the one we tested. It's the one we tested the other day, right? And it's still came back pretty high.
Yeah.
Jamie, what's the timeline on any of this? I don't know, whatever they would implement anything as far as remediation, we're probably not, that's probably not included in in this phase right here, right?
No, what we'll do is if the town, the next step would be for the town to say, yes, we would like to support the MVD in this initiative. And then there would be a meeting with the the ES and the DES would determine how much funding might be available. And then based on the funding availability, a work scope would be put together to try to figure out what could be done. So you're probably several months away from that.
Okay.
But I think if we could, you know, my hope is you got to start somewhere. And I think if we were able to initiate this and start something in the fall, that would be awesome. Because it's also going to help seven and eight too. I mean, to to a certain extent, that whole act, which is Brooke.
Yeah, so this doesn't necessarily commit us to any future funding. Now, we will still have the ability to approve to move forward or to not move forward with any additional funding as part of this program, right? We're not locked into anything.
Absolutely nothing and not committing the town to anything either. Just just an agreement to meet and discuss what could be could be accomplished if they could qualify for the Brownsfields. But you know, when the state is reaching out to everyone and saying, are there any brownfield opportunities out there? Because we have EPA money hitting sitting in the accounts. You know, we should try to take advantage of that.
And Jamie, this is only for like this money is only available for remediation of the property, right? The contaminated property, not for remediation of damages that occur due to that contaminated property.
As far as I know, Wolf, I think you're correct. But I think it's definitely a question that's legitimate at the time we meet and ask if there are other funding opportunities for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Make a motion if you want.
Sure.
Yeah. So I'd move that we send the letter with Don and Ron's signature on it.
I second that motion.
All right, motion by John, second by Paul. Any other comments, Ron or Jill or anybody else have anything?
Nope.
All right, then we can go ahead with a roll call vote. John, how do you vote?
I.
And Paul?
Vote I.
Wolf?
In favor.
Ken?
In favor.
And myself in favor as well. So that carries five zero zero to proceed with that letter. I think that's good. Thanks for bringing that up to us, Jamie. Jill, if you want to just make that, you know, the last change to add Ron's signature as well. And you could put my full name in there, Donnelly Preventure Chair, MBD Board of Commissioners.
Yep.
Great.
Are you going to come in to sign that? Or do you want me to scan it over to you? You'll sign and scan it back?
I I can sign it and scan it back if you want.
Okay.
Or actually, I'm going to be on the road tomorrow, so I could probably pop in. Yeah, why don't we do that?
And you're going to put on your letterhead, right?
Yeah, it's already on letterhead.
Okay, good. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. I think that's a great. I really really happy that you guys are moving on that because I think there's that's that's a freebie. And we should try to take advantage of it possibly. On the next item that you asked me to look at is the sixty nine Wilson Road property. And you asked me to do kind of a light review of the properties around there. And so what I did was put together that proposal that you have in your package for fifty nine hundred dollars and just to try to take a look at the potential favorability. If you recall what we're looking for and John Lyons made it kind of clear that the favorability of something in this area would be a non PFOS related source. So if there were opportunities for another, you know, a non PFOS related source, that would be of interest. And so this is one that we would consider to be a potential non PFOS contaminated environment. So this is just kind of a preliminary look see. And I put together work scope. It's I tried to keep it light because you you wanted to keep it light to see if we would further with it. But so it's for fifty nine hundred dollars. And essentially giving you a sense as to whether or not there's a sufficient amount of favorability to go in and do some geophysics.
Yeah, I I wanted to just make point out that I know last time, I think at the last meeting, we spoke about this briefly. And there was question whether we would need a substantial extension in water main. If this site did pan out. And I do believe it would be, you know, a pretty long connection. I mean, not not outrageous, but there is some work going on at the end of Linda Lane that we could probably tie in there on O blood road. But I also looked at it and depending on which property looks favorable. So there are two properties in here. Is it on each side of Wilson Hill Road?
Correct.
Right.
They they do own both properties. One, right now, it's just the one on parcel four B. One one twenty seven is what they were inquiring about.
Okay.
Say that again, Ron. Which one?
So the the one on the across Wilson, one four B one two seven.
Yeah.
Twenty seven.
Yep.
Is what they were inquiring about, but they do own both sides.
And we're going to look at kind of that general small area region, not just that one part property. We're going to try to take a look at as much as we can. And also from a bedrock perspective, not just unconsolidated overburden, but a bedrock opportunity.
Yeah, so my point was when I was looking at that, it it's probably not as far of a connection as you would otherwise think. I mean, it seems like reasonable. I was thinking if we were on the south side of Wilson Hill Road, it would be pretty short to do a directional drill underneath South Heagan River and we could tie into waterline on Davidson Street, which would probably be closer than running back Wilson Hill Road. But again, you know, we can, we can look at that. I think this first step is a is a good thing to see if this looks like it could even be favorable or not. So I I think that was, and I agree with with the philosophy of looking for. You know, if we can find wells that don't need treatment, obviously, that's really the best outcome that we could get. So I did look, this is outside of the groundwater management zone. Not that that is a hard stop on the extent of limit of contamination, but it is outside of that groundwater management zone. So hopefully, you know, that bodes well for having lower non detect PFAS. So that's that's my opinion. I I think this is probably a good thing to look into. I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments or concerns or anything.
No, I'm I agree with what Jamie said. And and I that is my philosophy. I think if we can get some PFAS free water, then it it will help. It will help with the problems that we're seeing with the O and M costs on the current plants. Non PFAS water can buy a lot of pipeline.
Sure.
I'm gonna expose my lack of knowledge about town. Which direction is the Sohegan flowing?
Easterway. Easterly. Easterway east.
Yeah, it's flown it's flown into the Merrimack.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if there's no other questions, then I guess we're at the point if we want to move forward with this, somebody can make a motion to authorize this proposal from Emory and Garrett.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion by John. Anybody want to second that?
Second that motion.
The second by Paul. So that would be to proceed with the March thirty twenty twenty one groundwater exploration and development proposal for sixty nine Wilson Hill Road. And that that would be coming from Debbie system development charges. Fund.
I would think so.
Yeah, I think we can use that. Yeah, that are the new well funds that we're trying to use up as well.
Yeah, new well, I would say.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's go for that one first, and then we can always branch out if we needed to.
Okay. And that's in the amount of fifty nine hundred dollars. Okay, so motion was made by John, second by Paul. Any other questions on that? Seeing none, we can go to a roll call vote. John, how do you vote? Paul?
Vote I.
And Wolf?
In favor.
Ken?
In favor.
And myself in favor as well. So that carries five zero zero. Great. So look forward to that, Jamie. Thanks.
And I do. Don, can I ask one question? This is Keith. And and Jamie, we're Don, we're addressing this in the master plan update too. So we have a small paragraph on that. So Jamie, maybe I could just get a copy of that work scope, not the work scope, but at least the areas. So we know in our master plan, when you deliver it, it's got the, we've got things properly addressed because making sure we're looking at the same properties. But that's all I had. I just wanted to get that from you.
Yep, I'll forward that to you in the morning or tonight. Yep.
Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Great.
And Jamie, it does say here ten days, you know, prepare to initiate work on the project within ten days upon receiving the authorization to proceed, but it doesn't say what the delivery, you know, protected delivery time was.
You're so sharp on that.
We can't hear that.
I don't want to nail you down, but we have so many projects open right now that are just, you know, going on and on and on. And then I want to make sure we have a little bit of time on.
Fair enough. I think, you know, we would have likely have this done in forty five days. So probably not the next meeting, but I'd probably present the results, the meeting after that.
Okay. Good enough.
Yeah.
As long as you're not taking away any valuable time from the well nine works. I think that's that's the high priority, I think.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, good point.
No, and and that's where I want to head to on this next conversation. This is going to be a important one.
Right. I just want to mention one thing before you move on. I know we've got some participants, I believe, and I think it would be good for us after you do this presentation on well nine, I'll ask if anybody in the audience wants to ask questions on these particular subject matters that you presented, Jamie, so that you're here to answer those.
Okay.
So if anybody's listening out there, stay tuned. I'll be asking for public comment soon after Jamie's last presentation here. Go ahead. Thanks.
No, I appreciate it. I it Don had written a an email to me a few about a week ago asking about the concern, expressing the concern about the drought that we're in. And we are in a moderate drought. You know, we're advising our utilities in the seacoast in areas to start water conservation already because of the levels of groundwater in the aquars. And of course, there's a mixed message if we're going to be doing a pumping test and discharging water out onto the ground while we're asking people to conserve water, if that's the direction the board ends up going. But it is a it is a challenge. So the discussion has been, can we pump that water directly into the water system? And that's not such a straightforward answer, but the answer is potentially yes. And is it the right thing to do? I think it is the right thing to do if we can if we can make it work. And what are the obstacles to get it done? Well, the obstacles are we've got to get a permit from the state to allow us to pump directly into the system. We have to make some decisions. The pump test would be delayed until we get the pipe. We it's going to be delayed anyways until we get the pipe on the ground. The twelve inch HDBE pipe was, I believe, ordered and it has about a six to eight week turnaround time. That's I know Ron was ordering at the today, I believe. So that's I believe that went out. So the we would pump from the well through the twelve inch pipe that would be laid on top of the ground into the system. So we'd have to put in a Y to pump it into either a put a Y in that would pump directly into the the distribution system, or we have to pump it into a tank that we would then repump into the system. And the reason why we pump it into the tank freely is that we would have a smaller pump in the product in the test well, because we would not be pumping against the head. But the complications are that we have to have an enclosed tank because you can't have an open tank and pump into the public water system because of birds, animals, and everything else. So that'd have to be closed. So we're so Ron and I and Peter Pitzus were on the phone with them today. We were spending about an hour and twenty minutes trying to figure out if that was even possible. And the reality is, is that it becomes very complicated to try to pump into a temporary tank. So the thinking would be, all right, let's pump it from the test well directly in the system. Now we have two choices. Do we buy the production pump? That has to push against the head of the treatment plant, which would approximately be approximately two hundred horsepower production pump that we buy again at risk. We're doing a lot of stuff at risk here. We got a pipe, we got a well, and now we might have a pump. Put the pump in at the production pump and use that as our test pump. We have the ability to, you know, the MBD has a generator that could be used to to power that. So that could work. Or do we just go into the system and Peter is going to be working on Peter Pitzus is going to give us some prices or some numbers on the head. That's right there in the system. We use a test pump and pump it directly in the system. But then we'd have to use a variable speed drive motor control so that we can run that off the flow meter. We put the flow meter and the F D, you know, the VFD at the wellhead with a gate valve to control the flow so that we can try to continuously pump at the same rate. Because as you know, if we don't do something to control the rate, the rate will be dictated by the tank level in the town in town, right? So the water level of the tank when it drops is going to ask for more water. That's going to cause well two to pump more water, which will then impact the amount of water we can push through the pipe and that will reduce the flow out of the test well. So we'll end up having this up and down. And we might not be able to avoid it altogether, but the state wants us to pump both wells simultaneously. the state wants us to pump both wells simultaneously and rightfully so. So we're kind of in this, uh, catch twenty two as to how to do it. Um, so Don, I didn't wa- wasn't ignoring your email, but you opened up, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of discussion, um, that we were having, but we weren't, you know, we weren't a hundred percent sure how we were going to address it. And I was hoping to do it tonight. So I'm leaning towards the following, I'm leaning towards having us use a going, not using the secondary pumping system, but using the, a pump in the test well, pumping directly into the distribution system with a VFD drive that we might have to buy and a flow meter that we can tie in that would control the flow out of that well and then run MVD to nonstop during the pump test, which means we probably shut well seven and eight off and then operate the difference from four and five. And that was, uh, you know, Peter was thinking, Peter Pitts was thinking that could be accomplished, but if we went that route. Now, with the letter we got back from the state, it wasn't a fatal flaw letter. I mean, there are things in there that they've asked us to do, which we need to do. I hadn't put a price together for the additional work that's going to need to be done, but I don't think it's going to be catastrophic. We do need to send out letters to all the homeowners around the area to get permission to monitor. If recall, I budgeted my work on the basis of thirty monitoring points. It looks like we might have forty based on what the state asked us to do. They also increased the number of posometers we need to install, which we have gone and done already because I want to get this monitoring started. So we installed those posimeters this past week. So there's a, some expenses that are there. Plus, the state wants us to do a wetlands, uh, assessment. Not super detailed, but there's a vernal pool there and they're wanting to go out there and do a, um, a, a wetlands assessment. So I thought that I would let you know, I, I know there's more conversation we have to have with the state. But there's probably going to be additional funds that I thought I'd bring back to you next time. Once we sort out the final pumping, because I didn't bid this on a two hundred horsepower pump. If we go that route. And that's just something that is going to flush out, I think, when we get done. But I wanted your opinion, uh, and so I'm seeking your, your guidance as to whether or not you want to take a risk and think about, I can price out the pump for the final pump, production pump. Uh, if you want. And, and, and also I think it's important that, you know, with the construction, we've got this other piece at the end that I know Underwood is concerned about, and that is construction and getting the permanent time. And of course, there's some soft issues there with whether we get a public hearing request or we don't get a public hearing re- request because that extends the timeline. But I still believe that if we were to pump this well, let's say we wait the eight weeks or the ten weeks, we have to get this pump test on to get the pipe in, to get a fuse, get it ready to go. We order the pump because the pump may take us eight weeks to order two. Then if we're pumping, you know, a June, let's say beginning of July, um, and we run that pumping test sometime in July, then we're submitting our report in September and then we still have, I think we'll still be in a, in a reasonably good position to have professional opinion that we're going to move forward and let the contractor begin. I think we have a deadline of December thirty first to let the contractor know if he can start on the construction. So I think it works. Um, but I, and I think we, you know, I think there's some savings by buying the production pump. It will be, you know, for sure. But we also need to decide if we're going to go the full Monty on a VFD drive. And Peter was not convinced, and Peter, you can chime in on this, you want that we need a VFD for the final production, but we would definitely need a VFD to operate the pump test. So Peter, did you think, you're, you're muted. You're muted.
Yep.
Okay. Did you think that you needed a VFD for the production pump in the, in the pipe, after construction? I thought you didn't.
No, we, we, we definitely have a VFD in there.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
So we'd have to order that VFD too then with the production pump.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is, that, that's all included into, in the bit. And as we, as we mentioned that the VFD that you're using might not have to be, you know, our, the one we specified has a lot of filters on it and stuff like that. So
Yeah, we wouldn't need that much.
Right. So I think the R VFD would be more, it's, it is more expensive and it takes longer to get than the one you, you're getting.
So just for the commissioners to understand, the VFD that you have for four and five, was that in the five thousand dollar range?
I'm not sure on that.
I thought that was something.
How would that work housing wise? I mean, the VFD needs a power supply, you know, it needs, needs, it's a power feed. It needs, it needs a transformer probably and all that stuff and the line filter. And then we're doing a temporary test here. Would we have like some temporary shack or something or temporary container that we operate this in? And how is this going to work out with code requirements?
So if we run it directly into the system, we'll run, we'll use the generator. So there'll be a temporary, there'll be a generator out there running twenty four seven. And then there'll be a control valve there and it'll go through. So you'll have, you'll have to put the flow meter out at that, at the well site. So we'll put a VFD flow meter temporary. And there'll probably be some cover, maybe some tents to cover it, but we wouldn't have any issues with the state. It would only be for our convenience to protect, you know, from heavy rainfalls.
Right, but the V, VFDs is a device that's usually mounted on a bin rail and, and, you know, you can't just throw it into the woods, right?
Yeah, probably put in a trailer, some kind of a trailer, a box trailer, some sort. Yep.
Jamie, unless I misunderstood, I thought, um, we would, we don't have the, the, wouldn't have the controls to run the VFD off of the, the flow meter.
Yeah, when I talked to Barry this afternoon, after you and I spoke, um, he feels we're going to have to have a flow meter and a VFD working in concert with each other.
Okay.
In other words, yeah, there's one's going to have to drive the other. So we'll have to sort that out. We'll, we'll, we'll need to either get a different flow meter or, you know, the, but we'll have to have a flow meter that can, that is controlled with VFD. Otherwise, we'll end up having a rate that's too variable.
So can I ask some dumb business guy questions like, how much of this water would we lose if we just let it go onto the ground? Wouldn't some of it come back into the aquifer?
Well, that's the point. They don't want us that to happen. They want to see what the impact's going to be. If it's going to actually be, we're going to simulate going into the system, which will never go back in the ground. Because they want, they want to see what happens when it's under kind of operational conditions.
Oh, it happens that fast.
Yeah. And so the only other option in, in the pumping test plan was to run in another, I don't know, Ron, I can't remember. It's a thousand feet beyond well two to get it further out of the wellhead.
It was about that, yeah.
Yeah, to get it out of the recharge area. So they don't want us to recharge, replenish the wetlands or replenish any vernal pools or anything else that might be, that we're trying to evaluate impacts on.
So wherever we're dumping it, it's doing, not doing anybody any good.
Right. And so it would be best to try to pump it into the system if possible, you know.
I think it's chlorinated like all the other raw water that goes out of well two.
So, yeah, so if we get the right permit, if, if the state allows us, we're going to have to get a permit and we'll have to take a nitrate and a, you know, bacteriological and we'll probably have to take a PFAS sample just to them, even though it's going to be above drinking water standards. We'll have to demonstrate what it is because that's what, you know, you know, um, that's why you're building a treatment plant. So I think it is doable, but it requires Ron to do quite a bit of legwork because he's going to have to put in a Y. He's going to have to tap the transmission line and tap and put in the temporary line into that system.
It would need the Y anyway, so.
Right. So nothing is going to be, if the well goes permanent, you're not wasting any money. It's just if, if we hit a snag or a fatal flaw now. Will we pump something out of that well? Definitely. So the pipeline's not going to be for, you know, I don't, I mean, I really be stunned if the pipe, you know, we don't get some water out of it. We might not get every drop that we want. But, um, we'll get something. And I also, to be honest with you, I'm more inclined to want to do this during the dry period when there's limited water flowing through the Natick Brook. Because I can't really demonstrate an impact if it's not flowing. Right? And historically, that brook is not flowing. Right? That it just, in the summertime, last year, it didn't flow at all for, for, you know, four or five months. And that's when, if you recall, I ran out there and took a lot, had our guys take a lot of pictures and a lot of ta- take evidence that showed that the Natick Brook was, is not flowing. So even if we change the gradient, let's say we draw the, we're going to draw the water table down. Uh, whether it's five feet below the, the Natick Brook or ten feet below the Natick Brook, it doesn't really matter. That's not an, that's not something that's going to really generate an impact. So we're going to have to be working hard on the historical piece with them. Because there, you know, everybody i- is concerned, would be concerned about impacts on wetlands. So.
Jamie, can I ask a question? How, how long, how long is this pump test going to be?
So it's got to be a minimum of five days. But, you know, that's the, that's, that's the, that's what we've based it on. So they're going to try, you know, the goal there is to have stabilization, but what we'd like to do is be able to pump it at the thousand gallons a minute out of well two and, and ideally, the maximum that we requested is a thousand gallons a minute out of well nine.
And just to, I, I guess just to put it in perspective, if it's five days or even if it runs a little bit longer, you're really only talking about under ten million gallons of water, right?
A million and a half a day. Yep, under ten million.
So I mean, in the, in the big, big scheme of things, it's happening in the drought or potential high use times, but it's, it's not a lot of water on a, certainly on an annual basis or even a monthly basis.
No. And we could potentially, you know, split it out and move it all the way up. I mean, that's certainly possible, you know.
I just, I'm, and I'm not trying to encourage one way or the other because I get the challenge and dilemma here. It just sounds like there's a lot of costs and risks associated with it when you're really only talking. I just want to make sure we know what kind of volume of water we are talking about.
Yeah. Well, the risk, the pipe has been ordered, the twelve inch pipeline from well nine to well two has been ordered. And I think, Ron, you've ordered all the parts too. Is that right?
That was, yeah, Dave was going to make that per, uh, put that order in today. And that wasn't what was actually driving, um, the meter was the, what was actually the, uh, critical path. That was an eight week lead time and he ordered it. That meter was ordered two weeks ago. Once we get the, the vendor. So the, the pipe, I didn't think it was that much of a, there wasn't that much of an issue with the lead time.
But didn't Dave say it was six to eight weeks this morning?
That was from a, another vendor.
Okay, so do you know what that lead time?
Somebody that we're not going with. That was a six to eight lead, uh, six, eight weekly time from, uh, Webb, but
Okay.
We're not going to go with Webb, so.
Was he, he was going to ask them if they could expedite it?
Yeah. That was on the meter though, I believe. They're going to try to expedite the meter as well, but.
But we still have, we, we still have the issue of the, of the, um, of the pump. Um, and I got to make, and we got to make a decision on that too. But I, you know, I would, I would think that the whole thing will be a little bit easier to address if we get to the point where we have limited or no flow in the Natick Brook.
So Jamie, that, um, if we were to buy the production pump, but maybe that's a question for Keith and Peter. And that well would not come to fruition. Would we be able to use that pump and VFD at another wellhouse that we're developing here over the next couple of years, like Mitchell Woods, for example? In worst case, I would be maybe prudent to maybe oversize it, right? And then scale it back in the actual point of use at a later time to become, to get a little bit more flexible. If we were not using for this well nine, well, we're not really losing a whole lot, right? Possibly.
Well, what, what's the size of the pump that's going into well two, Peter? Can't hear you.
Are you talking diameter or gallon?
No, no, horsepower.
What's, but it's a two, as a two hundred horse on that one.
For well two?
Yeah.
Okay, so you could use it as an, as a replacement for well two because it'd be the same size essentially.
But the only thing is it's, uh, on, on well two, it's a vertical turbine. So the motor is up top compared to a submersible. So it's, so we're not going to you know, so the motor couldn't be used, right?
Okay.
You know, um, the pump would be, you know, similar, but if we're going to use that in the project, then we have to go through all the AIS stuff to make sure that it, it meets AIS is American Iron and Steel requirements. So we have to go through that to make sure that that passed because of the funding.
Oh. Would well nine be subject to that anyways?
If they're just putting a temporary pump in there and then pulling it out, as long as it's not part of the final product, then it does not have to meet AIS. If it's just a temporary item, then it does not.
Yeah, I think we're talking about using it for a permanent pump, right? Isn't that?
Yeah, the only thing is the, well, the permanent pump, so, um, you know, when we were talking earlier today, I was going to give Jamie sort of the, um, what, you know, the head conditions on that pump would be for the pump test. Uh, the pump that we have specified, you know, it has a lot the head conditions on that are a lot higher because we're going through the treatment plant and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I guess you could, you know, oversize that and just, you know, um, you know, you know, well, if you have the VFD, you could run it lower, but.
So if we were just doing this pump test to waste, like we originally were, would we need a VFD for that or not?
No. No. You, you wouldn't need a, you wouldn't need a VFD.
Right.
You could control with a control valve. Yep.
So I mean, I'm, I'm kind of looking at this and it just seems like there's a whole lot of over complication by trying to save whatever seven and a half million gallons of water, which is like three days in the middle of the summer, two days of, of, actually two days of summertime use. Um, and, and I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing, we'd be buying equipment that we wouldn't be able to use in the future, like a VFD and a flow meter. Cause I don't.
The flow meter we are going to use because, um, that is, we bought the same flow meter that we're going to be installing in the vault for the well nine. As long as we get, well, nine goes in there, the flow meter will be used and then the pipe will be used. So we have pretty good confidence that will be used. But that is, your point is something that we did discuss today is, there's a lot of uh, added items into this and then some more complexity and more air, you know, more places, um, you know, issues could develop that could delay things, you know, compared to saying, okay, let, if we got to lay out another thousand or thirteen hundred feet of, you know, flat pipe, you know, to get beyond well two, you know, is it, is that easier, you know?
Right. Won't be easy, but it, it's probably doable. And, and one thing that we haven't talked about is that if we put it into the system, we've got a double dosage, right? Because you're going to have to have another ability to add phosphate cost, you know.
Right, that's.
Yeah, so if you're pumping it to waste, you don't have to worry about that. Um, you don't have to put in that double dosing system or the system, you know, you got your dose and going for well two, you're going to have to dose whatever you put into the distribute, distribution system.
And then you're going to have two thousand gallons going into the Berry Road water main from that. Cause well, well two needs to be pumping as well as well nine. So is that going to create additional restriction and back pressure in that line? I just think there's a lot of unknowns trying to, you know, chemical injection, VFDs. Is the VFD that we would have to purchase to do that, something we would use, reuse in the well twos treatment plant? Yes, that, that VFD is, that, that's, that's not a five thousand dollar VFD. I think that's like a fifty thousand dollar VFD or something, isn't it?
I believe it, I believe it's more in that because when we got into, um, on the well four and five project, there was an, you know, issue that on the well four and five project, there was a, you know, issue that the contract, you know, he, we needed to up the size at a VFD to meet the, um, uh, safety factor of the pump, you know, and then when we did that, I know, I forget what horsepower we were going from what to what. But it was, I think, like a, was it around $10,000 change, Ron, something in that ballpark?
Yeah, now you're saying that, that, yeah, yeah, I think it was.
I, I could, I could look it up, but it's somewhere in, in that ballpark. So, yeah, I think the, if you're gonna get, but again, the VFD that we were looking at, you know, again, it has a lot more bells and whistles on it than what you might need. But it's, you know, it's not gonna be a VFD that you're gonna be um, but using again, and, and I know if the contractor ordered the VFD right now, I think we are looking at a 12 week lead time before with an approved shop drawing. We don't have an approved shop drawing or anything with, which, and then you're taking a big risk of, you know, buying a VFD to give to a contractor after you, you know, you know, it's gonna be a, you know, it, it just, that, it just adds a lot of I don't know, I can see a lot of issues going wrong with that, you know.
And I, I wanna ask another question, and, and maybe I'm catching up a little bit, but is this a concern over perception or a concern that we're actually impacting the, our long-term supplies during the drought? Because I, I keep looking at the costs and the complication and if it's just, if it's a concern that we're using water that would otherwise be used in the system and we're wasting it, um, is there an opportunity to, you know, spend a little bit of money on a more reliable way, or, you know, we, we could solve that by using Pennachuck? And just saying during the pump test, spend the money on Pennachuck, which be a fraction of what it sounds like we'd be spending trying to make this thing work and reducing our risk.
It's a good question. And Keith, I was just trying to address Don's.
No, I know, I know, I know you were, I know you were, and I, I'm, I'm just trying to, uh, see if there's another way to to solve this with reducing our risk and, and make, because I'm not exactly sure what Don's concern was, but.
Well, my, my main concern was that the state kind of identified, um, private wells and things that weren't covered initially. And my concern was that it was gonna cause a delay in the pump test. I mean, we originally were talking about doing this pump test in like March back last year. So I don't, I don't really care about wasting seven and a half million gallons in March, because we have time to recoup the aquifer. Um, so there's gonna be a time delay in gathering that additional information for the private wells that wasn't included in the preliminary report that DES commented on. And I just made a comment that if we, if this is gonna push us out further, we're gonna be doing pump tests, which could be in a dry or drought period, which is unfortunate, but that wasn't, I wasn't necessarily insinuating that we should um, take precautions to try and save that water. I was trying to see if we could alleviate us from being in that situation. And I thought a month or two ago, the pipe situation was already taken care of, and now I'm hearing, or we haven't even ordered it yet. You know, we talked about this two months ago to make sure we weren't gonna be in the position that we've kinda find ourselves in now, so. You know, water's over the dam, we can only go forward if we're gonna be doing this pump test in June. Where we, we dug a hole, now we're in it, so I don't think we can come out of it, we can't go back in time, you know, so. Um, I, I just think it's probably a little more complicated and we might have longer lead times to get equipment, we might be risking buying equipment that we might not be able to use just by trying to conserve this pump test water. You know, it's probably on a cost basis, it's probably less costly to, if we need to make up water, is to open the Pennachuck reserve and connect there. And I'd like to try and see if we don't have to order any long lead time things. If that compresses the time schedule a little bit in our favor, maybe we just do it that way, because there's a lot of logistics here about tying in a well, chlorinating it, putting a VFD inside of a truck. There's just a lot of things that, that's just gonna cause more time, I think, to try, try and coordinate all that and more costs, so maybe I don't know, as far, I guess if I had to make a decision, I would say, let's just plan that we, to do the pump test that we originally were going to do and pump it to waste. I assume we're using a test pump for that? And just renting a test pump for that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I agree with you, Don. I, I really was just trying to address your question about it. Cause I know you, you expressed significant concern about the drought and wasting water and, and, and that's why I turned kind of a about face and went the other direction, trying to address your interest in that. Cause I wasn't sure how, how significant it was, but certainly, look, my life is gonna be a lot easier if we go that other direction, uh, because, I mean, I won't be easy, because I gotta figure out how to get the water another thousand feet away. Lay all that pipe out and make sure it handles it, blah, 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 but, but, uh, but I agree with you. So if you, if, if the commissioners are okay with the waste of the water during a drought, because I think we'll be in a drought. Um, and there'll be some optics involved in that, that, you know, we'll have to address probably upfront. But, um, that's okay. I, I'm, I'm supportive of that one, you know, I'm supportive of that. Completely. I just, I just tried to investigate the option to try to address and to address what you were concerned about.
So I think we know the options. I don't know if anybody else has any opinions or preferences one way or the other. Um, but go ahead and ask if, if you got a position one way or the other, you know, let us know. I guess now's the time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with not pumping it back into the system.
I agree with that. Just, just put it to waste. It sounds like it's just getting way over complicated.
It is, it's complicated. It seemed to get unravel as we continued to add. This is just not, not today's conversation, but just the last since Don sent that letter, I went rut row. I just, I kind of recoiled and said, hmm, how am I gonna address that?
I appreciate the effort of trying to put it back in the system, and I get it, but at that point, we're talking about buying stuff we might not be able to use at a later date.
Yeah.
Just, just, just waste.
Well, it's one week, right? It's not like a month or two or three, it's, it's one week, so.
Right.
It's, it's, it's limited, it's very limited.
I also believe that Jamie, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, pumping to waste is the standard that you use for well, and pumping it into the system is something rare that's not done all the time.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
So, so what you're doing, if somebody says something, you're going, this is what we, you know, typically do for a pump test, you know?
Right.
And as Ron and I were talking, it's like the, the same perception of, while you're flushing your lines, you're wasting water on your lines, but that's part of operation. This is part of, you know, developing a source, this is what you do. And sometimes, you know, the water is wasted, but it's not wasted in the sense of, you're not pumping water that, you know, from a well that's active.
Right.
And wasting it, you're pumping it from a new one that's really hasn't been approved yet and I'm wasting it.
Right, and, and I think Ron will be happier too, because we're not gonna have to manage the system, we're gonna, you know, micro managing the system to keep the storage tank stable is a, is a, is a tough challenge. So, okay, well, I'm, if everybody's good with that, then, then I can, um, move forward in that direction and I'm really glad to have this conversation. And I get it, it's not an easy comp, it's, it's not definitely straightforward, but the weeds, the weeds got thick.
Yeah.
So to speak.
So Jamie, how much, um, how much effort is it going to be to address the, um, the, DES's comments about adding in the additional private wells and, and sending out letters to those, those well owners and see if they wanna be included? Is that, is that something that you can make work within the timeframe we're talking about here?
Yeah, no, we should be able to do that, um, and, but first, we gotta get the comments. So they did something that they nor- don't normally do. Usually they give us a conditional preliminary approval. But in this case, they did not. So we actually have to submit, and we're working on it right now, submit a response that they will then get back to us on. Uh, in the interim, I think we can jump the gun and, and start, before we get a full response back, we will jump the gun and get the letters out to the homeowners. But, um, this is something that we do, uh, when it's required, but you know, this is a bit of an unusual request in that we know we're not gonna have impacts on them, but we're having to do it any, we I don't say no, but we're 99% sure we're not gonna have any adverse impact, so. Uh, it's just an exercise, I think, more, uh, an optic exercise that, that, because there's been a lot of issues in the state of New Hampshire with people, particularly in the southern part of the state, um, where there's been some impacts that were not identified by previous groups. And then it's come back to bite the state and the state's now being overly conservative, so. Now, we'll move forward on that. Even, you know, and I'll, I'll come to before you next time with, you know, when I think the estimated changes, change order will be, but I'm not talking about tremendous amount of money to get this done, I just wanna get it done. The wetlands piece is one that, you know, we wanted to get a sense from them as to what they wanted us to do, so now we, now we have that. So, um, I can pull that together. I'm getting prices right now to do the, um, wetlands inventory part, you know. That's more than what they already have. I, I was hopeful they, they already know what's there, but now they want someone to actually physically go touch it, so. Which we do, I mean, we do that all the time, so.
All right, so, um, I guess we're, everybody on the same page then? Is there any other decisions you needed? It sounds like we're just doing the original pump test to waste. Um, and we're, we're just proceeding the way we were going to a- all along.
Yep.
So if there's any other, um, decisions or anything, just let us know, but it sounds like you've got everything you need at this point from us?
I do, I do. And, uh, I, I think the next thing is we gotta locate the pipe that'll take us from well two on, yawn and get that done. Um, so that, that, that'll be what I start doing tomorrow.
Okay.
No, I appreciate it. And I, I know it's a tough t- conversation, but I appreciate it. I think that gives me really good direction.
Okay. Um, I think maybe, um, before you head out, I, I'll see if, does anybody else, I know that we have two attendees. Looks like there's someone named Jerry that's got their hand up, and then Lorraine Allen. I don't know if there's a way that you can, um, let them in to ask a question or something?
Jerry, you're unmuted.
Well, thank you. This is for James. I'm, I'm not sure, what is this pump test for, James? The purpose?
Uh, the state requires a, we're putting in a new well for MBD to replace, uh, well number three for the time being. Uh, and so the pump test is required by the state to determine the sustainable yield impacts on local wetlands and, uh, groundwater and best, you know, groundwater sources. And also what is the impact on existing supply wells, which would be in this case of MBD two. And there's a detailed um, very rigorous process that the state requires, uh, for anybody putting in, in testing a new public drinking water source.
Okay, so Jerry, can, can you state your name?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jerry, can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, it's, uh, Jerry Hill, Oxford Street, Narrarack.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, did you have another question, um, before I interrupted you?
I was, I was, I was thinking, this has nothing to do with the seasonal high water table. This is more to do with, with the, the aquifer, I presume.
Correct. And the, yes, and the goal is to try to test it at the time when it's m- maximum stress that, you know, that would help us get to a sustainability number.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, we got Lorraine Allen on the line. I don't know if she has a question. I don't see a, a, um, hand raised. Oh, now she's gotta raise, okay. We'll get to you, Lori.
Okay, Lorraine, you're all set.
Hi, usually I'm working at this time, so I'm, I'm glad I had a chance to log on. Uh, just a brief question. I noticed you said something about sending letters to private well owners that are getting bottled water right now. There's been no commitment that I've heard of from DES or St. Albayne to give even an estimate of what they're doing for the private well owners on record on that side. So I was kind of intrigued by that, that topic. Can you just say a little more about that? Am I reading into this incorrectly?
Yeah, I think you are. Um, so this really doesn't have anything to do with water quality, private wells. Um, it's, it's nothing related to that. What this is, is um, when we're pursuing this new well and we submitted a report to DES, and what is a requirement is that um, they're, they want us to ask to identify private wells. I think it's within a thousand feet of our expected recharge area or area of influence from pumping of this new well. They wanted us to, I, to request, identify and then request from those private well owners if they want us to monitor their well during the pump test that we're gonna be doing on well nine. It's just really to evaluate any hydraulic impacts, so that if there are any hydraulic impacts, we know about them ahead of time, and we can quantify how, you know, if they're minimal impacts, if there are no impacts, what degree of impact, if at all. So it's really nothing related to any of the, um, you know, St. Albayne bottled water, it's nothing like that. So hopefully that clarifies that. I don't know if you have anything to add, Jamie, but if, if that's.
That's good. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted to be sure there wasn't anything else going on, not with you guys, but with the state. Passing the buck to you for anything, because I would, I would follow up with them if that was the case. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think that is it for our, um, attendees. I just wanted to, uh, give an oppor- opportunity to ask questions. If, um, before Jamie left, if he had to answer any questions like that, so. Uh, so I think we're good. Um, if you have enough sufficient direction to proceed and, and Ron, as well as you two, if you don't have any other questions for the board on whatever, uh, pipe ordering, and I think everybody's on the same page now.
Yep.
Yeah, Don, did you want Jamie on, like, uh, you have that water conservation item? Did you want Jamie to be on that? And if you did, do you wanna just move that ahead of us?
Uh, yeah, I guess that's item number four on the agenda possibly here. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Drought conditions and water restrictions. Um, yeah, that's probably a good idea, maybe before you head off, Jamie. Um, so this item number four is, um, we're, we're going to discuss drought conditions and water restrictions. I'm not sure if there's anything in our packet for that.
The only thing that was to go towards that was, um, the article that we forwarded, um, regarding the drought conditions. That was just a separate email as a heads up that.
Right.
Don, one thing I was gonna ask the board is, knowing that we're, you know, we're, we're going into, or we're in a moderate drought right now, and technically from last year, we never removed the restrictions that we had. I wanted to put it to the board that if, if they would be interested, or if the feeling of just continuing that, that, those same restrictions moving forward into the summer. Um, the, the, allowing the odd even watering five to eight. And with that being said, if things change, we obviously can remove that, but my thought was going into it, knowing that we're already in a drought to start those, uh, protections a little bit earlier, rather than
than later.
Yeah, more of a reaction when we, when, you know, during the summer, when it, when things, if it continues and picks up even more.
Yeah, I, well, I think technically, we're actually, last I knew, we were just in abnormally dry conditions or something like that, I, I thought. I don't think any part of.
You are right, I said it right, I did state that wrong. It is abnormally dry, right now.
I, I don't know what, what the board preference on that. I mean, I, um, I, I would, I would feel comfortable just going back to our standard odd even. And if we start seeing an increase in demand and a drop in our storage tank levels, And if we start seeing an increase in demand and a drop in our storage tank levels. You know, maybe then we can go into this modified. I forget what phase that was called, but what level that was, but with the five to eight restrictions. I, I don't, I don't know that we have a need for that now. I, I don't know if the board agrees with me, but you know, i- if we knew what the future was going to pretend to be better to make a decision, but I, I, I just don't see that there's a need right now. And I mean, that's a need that if we see, we can react pretty quickly to it as well.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion, but you know, anybody else?
I haven't looked at exactly the, the rainfall deficit in Merrimack, because I wasn't really thinking I was going to talk about this tonight. But I know in Dover, we just came out with the, we just did that review for them. And there's about a six and a half inch deficit against the average. In other words, we're six and a half inches behind. Um, I would think that in Merrimack, we're probably in the same boat, about six and a half inches or some, somewhere in that range of behind average precipitation, which, you know, in April puts you behind the ball. Because, you know, usually that's the time when we're getting ahead and not getting further behind. And I know last year the monitoring, we were in some extent, you know, severe levels of water level, both in seven and eight and other wells. That monitoring report is in your office, but I, you know, I don't have it in front of me to speak to. But I know there were opportunities there where I was, we were definitely getting very concerned about water levels in the wells. So I think that if you can respond quick enough to change the water use patterns, that would be fine. I know in Dover. Uh, in, in some other communities, we have, uh, they are starting to put in some conservation measures. So I think it's something to be aware of and be considerate, you know, watching carefully. Because we could find ourselves into a, you know, into a tough spot. And of course, when we do the pump test on well two, if we see that we're going to have an impact on well. Uh, when we're pumping nine, we have an impact on well two. You may be seeing that the, you know, some, you know, a change in the act for storage in that, in that act where there too, that will be taking water from storage. So just, those are my two cents. I just wanted to know that we are definitely in, you know, in a deficit. And I thought we had switched over from abnormally dry to moderate drought when I looked at yesterday or this morning.
Maybe we did. I, I didn't see an update. Um, I know just from looking at it maybe a week or so ago, that's what I recall, but. What, would you have a, would you have a recommendation for us, Jamie? To, to think if we need to go into this modified level, I, the five to eight restriction?
I think, I think we should, that should be something that you revisit every two weeks. Um, you know, somehow that maybe the commission, you know, you, Don and Ron talk to each other at least two, every two weeks to look at where we're at. On, on this drought monitor and, you know, make that decision. Then I think probably a month is too long. That to have that conversation at this point, because things are drying up so quickly. So, uh, but I, I think you'd hold the course for right now if you want, but I would revisit in two weeks.
Yep. Any other comments from the board? Any perspectives or anything?
So just to clarify my recollection on this, is this strictly for sprinkler systems? Or this is applied to me standing out there with my ocean water push? Water restrictions.
Pretty much irrigation, irrigation only in the water restrictions. You can water by hand. Plants and in
Gardens.
Gardens and stuff by hand. Yes.
All right. So the only, the only other caution I have is that if we're overly cautious with it about it, the message comes along so often that it might get muted a bit. So that's the only thing that I would say. As far as the five day restriction on automated sprinkler system, that shouldn't really matter to anybody. If they're program, they're all programmed, right?
Typically, yeah.
So I guess I wouldn't necessarily think it would be uh, that detrimental to anybody to have it go from five to eight instead of some other time during the day.
Yeah, it's, it's just that there's definitely a there's like an enforcement arm that we need to follow up on and make sure people are doing it correctly. So it, it, you know, whenever we make a change like that, it's, it's something that's not done lightly, right? So I think instead of making a change now, not knowing if we really need it or not. I kind of agree with Jamie. Maybe we'll just keep watching this every two weeks and if we're starting to get into a situation where, you know, it definitely is a drought, our tanks are dropping, our well levels are dropping, then I think we can take action there. I just don't think we're there yet. We're not really in the irrigation season either. But it is right around the bend. So I think we've got to keep an eye on it.
And, and Don, I, you know, I, I agree. I don't have a problem. I mean, we can certainly communicate and, and decide if we need to go further. I was just thinking before we put the signs out, if it's a direction that we're going to be in sooner than later, that we may want to just lead with that. To, for the enforcement factor that, you know, we're already ahead of it. But, you know, we can, we can, we can work either way.
All right. All right. If no one else has any other comments?
I, I, the only thing I would say, you know, like every two weeks, simple email, you know, if, if there's comes to a situation where we have to make a decision. We can all just kind of through emails, say, you know, impose whatever we need to do. You know?
Yep. All right. Okay, I guess we can move on. I just checked real quick on the our action items list. I don't think I see anything in there for, for Jamie. So um, you can, you can probably be off the hook if you want.
Okay. Well, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Have a good evening and we'll be talking soon and I'll Don, I'll probably reach out to you. As we start figuring out the pipe issue, okay, the, the, the next layer of pipe that goes out there. I got my, my, my working orders. I know where I'm gonna go. So I appreciate it. It provides clarity. I'm quite grateful.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, bye.
Okay, so now we're on item number three, which is the Underwood Engineers project. So go ahead, Pete or Keith, whoever.
I'll start out with the seven and eight update. So contractor is moving along nicely. The wells have been cleaned and they're ready to go. So that's a good thing. So we're ahead of the schedule on that from, from last year. I know they're moving out to doing well two and well three. And with the hopes of having all that done by Memorial Day. So the contractor is moving along nicely with his work. Uh, we did talk to him as, as we, you know, mentioned at the last meeting. Uh, about, you know, trying to get as much work done as he can before the vessels come. And he has been doing that and has been doing sort of such a good job, but he might be sort of running out of some work that he can be doing in May, which is which is what we wanted. We wanted to make sure all the work that he could get done was done. So when the vessels got there, he could finish the building as, as fast as he could. And so he has accomplished that and, or is on his way to accomplishing that. So we're happy with that. So. Vessels are still scheduled to be delivered on June seventh. So they're going to be shipped. So Memorial, they were supposed to be coming. I don't know if you remember this. So it's supposed to be coming like June second or third. But the, where Memorial Day falls, that means those vessels would have been in transport during Memorial Day and all that kind of stuff. And just that would have caused logistical nightmares trying to get those big vessels on a holiday weekend. So that they changed the plan. So, uh, the vessels are being shipped right after Memorial Day and then are due in on the seventh. So.
And there will be the rigging day then too?
Yeah, it would be correct. Yep. So, uh, so that is still all on schedule. We're keeping an eye on that. Last time with four or five, when we received a you know, the delay notice that was late in the game. So I'm, I'm, you know, if we're going to get something, it might be in May that we get that boat. Uh, we've been talking to the contractor and he's been talking to Evoqua on a regular basis. Uh, just making sure everything's lined up and, and there. So we're just got our fingers crossed that Evoqua comes through and gets to you know, get them delivered on time. So that's kind of an update there. I wanted also to, to give you a very quick update on well two. So as, you know, the special meeting we had last week, you know, you approved the contract for Kinsman. We sent a ward recommendation up to DES. They also concurred with that. So they gave us to go ahead. And today, Ron signed a notice of award and we cut the check for $10,000 and I hand delivered it to Kinsman. So he has that. So we're we're underway there. And, and I did talk to Kinsman last week and he had already uh, you know, so right after I talked to him, he called the contract, uh, called Evoqua and got them, you know, sort of on notice and all that kind of stuff. So things seem like they are, you know, gonna start moving on that one. So, so that's good. So. Any questions on either of those projects?
Oh, sounds good.
And then that jumps into, uh, to key stuff, I think.
Yeah.
Well, then the, the next item, thank you, Pete. Did you want to talk about the, the, the change out with PFAS? I see that on the agenda.
Okay, I thought you, I thought you wanted to talk about that.
No, I can't. I mean, it's, uh, Peter should have, I think, did the, the board get some of the data?
Yeah.
And it should, should be a table in there. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And it's, there's not a lot there. It just shows the breakthrough of the short chains. There's nothing else breaking through. So we're not showing any other data. But the, but this does show the short chain breakthroughs.
Can somebody share the screen? I, I can do it if you want me to do it. I got it in front of me. I think it'd be good to, we can look at some numbers here.
Sure.
See if I can do it.
While, while he's doing that roughly, uh, the, the carbon has been u- used about twenty-two percent. Maybe a quarter of its anticipated life based on the warranty that was established with Evoqua. So think about it that way in terms of the bed volumes that have gone through it. Our guys have calculated. We're at about just short of 15,000 bed volumes and the warranty was for 60,000 bed volumes. The warranty was just for the regulated PFAS contaminants, not for the rest of it. Uh, and we have seen some breakthrough at ports twenty-five percent through and fifty percent, nothing at the seventy-five percent level yet. PFBA, PF PEA and PFHXA. So I think
And that's the lead vessel too, the twenty-five, fifteen, seventy-five. That's the lead vessel. Yeah.
That's right. And, and interestingly enough, uh, when we shared uh, some conversations with Portsmouth and Pease, because that's really the only other GAC vessel in New Hampshire right now. It's the breakthroughs that they're seeing are the same short change that we're seeing. So it's, uh, and in the same sequence too, actually. So I think the question was whether or not, or when you wanted to change this out. You know, some of the thinking we have is that you may want to run it through to the, the, as long as we can. Certainly want to try to maintain the bed volumes towards the warranty. Cause if we changed it out any sooner than that, you know, we're giving up on any kind of warranty we might have. And we'll just continue to monitor.
All right. So I guess no one's gonna put this on the screen then.
Well, I thought you were.
Yeah, I was too, but I can't get the.
Okay.
I actually only have a print copy in my, in front of me, so I can't do it.
Jill has to approve one of us to do so. I can share it, but I can't do this.
I have it on mine too.
I just made Don a co-host.
Okay. All right. Are you guys seeing that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
So this basically says that, um, what was the last sample, March twenty-third? That, um, we had no detect of PFBA, I'm assuming of any compound, right? At the seventy-five percent port?
Yeah, we've seen nothing that was above detection at seventy-five percent.
Okay. So I guess, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the only thing that's shown on this chart are the things that were detected. Everything else that's being tested is at non-detect. So that's why it's not on here.
Right. Okay. That was one of the things I was gonna ask. Good. So again, this, we're, you know, I think I'm just looking back and, and trying to make a prediction here. Um, and I guess one of the questions is, what do we want to implement as a, as a target, I guess? Now, I know, you know, going back at the warrant articles for wells two, three, seven and eight. Which really don't apply to wells four and five, but it's kind of the same concept is those warrant articles. The presentation was that the goal was to have non-detective all PFAS. So anticipating this, I think, looking back, I seem to remember PFBA broke through every twenty-five percent threshold. Like maybe after every two months of operation or so. And I'm not sure where, you know, so, so far, this went online, what, beginning of October or sometime in October? So we've got over November, December, January, February, March. So we're six months through. And we haven't gotten to the seventy-five percent port. Wh- which is good. So, um, I guess what, what's, what's the feeling of the board as far as do we schedule change out of the lead vessel as soon as PFBA breaks through a hundred percent of the first vessel? Or do we not want to do that? We still have the second vessel there, obviously. So that's catching whatever goes through the first vessel. But obviously, if we let that continue to saturate the second vessel, it might put us in a situation where we might be having to replace the second vessel a bit sooner than we otherwise would have as well. So I, I don't know really what the board wants to do here. I guess I'm just trying to evaluate what, what makes the best sense here. Does it make sense to let some of the non-regulated compounds leak into the second vessel? Or do we look at changing out the media as soon as the first vessel breaks through with PFBA? And, and the only reason I'm looking at this is because again, we presented the goal of non-detecting of all, not of all PFAS compounds. And unless there's a change in philosophy, I think that's kind of what the customers are, are expecting. So, you know, let me know what your thoughts are. And if that's something that the commission wants to do is you know, I guess trying to figure out when your preference is to change out this media. Is it, are we, are we trying to have a, a goal of non-detective all PFAS? Um, or are we willing to let some of the short chain unregulated PFAS compounds continue into the second vessel? And I don't know if that means we want to also let that PFAS, detectable PFAS go into the drinking water ultimately or not. But my, my preference is that we stick with the, with the goal that was presented to, at, at the Warren articles. Um, and, and I think we should, once, I think once we see any breakthrough of any PFAS in the first vessel, I think we should then move to change out that media. But, uh, you know, I'm open to opinions here. That's kind of what I'm asking.
And Don, uh, I have a question for Keith and Pete. The other communities, have they gotten, they haven't got to seventy-five percent yet? And I'm just curious, how much longer have they been running their GAC systems compared to us?
We have some information on that, Ken. And I was just about to add to that. As you're going to debate this, but P, Pease is seeing breakthrough of PFBA. As you're gonna debate this, but P, uh, peas is seeing breakthrough of PFBA in their leg vessel. According to the information that we got after about six months. So they've seen PFB break through their lead and their leg after about six months. Wow. They have, if you remember, much higher levels of PFAS than we do here at Merrimack. So if you're using peas as a guide. You know, it could be as soon as six months that both carbons would be exhausted, at least for PFBA. Uh, but um, so that would probably be a minimum, the obviously Merrimack should last longer because the lower levels. But that's what we know about peace and I don't know how long they've been running, Ken. I don't think I got that information. Um, sounds like six months, I guess, if that's what breakthrough.
Yeah, I think they started out, they didn't have the um, the resin going. So I think they started out treating just with the um. Um, the GAC first and then the re- the resin, they got online later.
Yeah.
What happened? But another uh just item for food for thought is, um, if you let, you know. If you uh let this one um, go a little bit longer, you can have a better understanding of. How you're treating PFAS and that type of thing. So you can make better decisions later on in the future by, you know. So maybe, you know, it's just a scenario just for thought. So maybe you let, you know. Uh, instead of replace replacing the media in the lead vessel. Right now, you know, maybe you wait and and it doesn't go through the lag vessel, but you end up seeing how some of the, you know. PFAS works through your first vessel. And kind of compare that to say, does that kind of match up with some of the RSSCT results that we have? Then you have a better idea of, you know, making future decisions. And then if you do run under that and you do decide. That no, we want to replace them earlier, then at that point, you might be almost like replacing both vessels at the same time. You know, for four, but at least you'll have some data that you can make decisions on and then um. You know, then you can see what you want to do in the future.
So I have a thought on this too. I mean, I'm not sure why we would replace the lead vessel before it's exhausted. Completely, like I would manage this to the finished water, not the water in between the lead and the lag. You're wasting an unbelievable amount of carbon by dumping that lead tank. Because it has some breakthrough of a short chain. And what we should be managing is what we're given to our customers. And we shouldn't risk necessarily that we're gonna be out of compliance. But I think you could let that lead tech tank go. Maybe you guys said Keith or Peter have a different ideas to how the carbon works, but. In my mind, you'd want to get all the useful life out of the lead tank as you could.
You're you're a hundred percent right, and that's that's got to be balanced with the risk that you might be adding if you don't want to have anything. Uh, show up at the um. Uh, and the finished water after the lag tank. So if you are gonna also. Yeah, I was just saying, if you also establish the rule that we don't want anything in the finished water. And then we swap, we exhaust the the lead tank with all the contaminants and use it, you know. Most efficiently, then you swap out. You may have already exhausted the the lag tank with the short chain. So when you swap it out, you may already be too late. And and I'm not suggesting that's what you, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't do what you're doing, Ken. I I think there's some merit to doing that, but that is, that's the downside.
We had this discussion during the phone call with Evoqua, actually, um, because they didn't want to guarantee, especially the shortages. If you recall that phone call, uh, we had exactly the discussion that uh, if we allow the leaf. Uh, vessel to basically to bleed through the short chains, all we do is reloading the lack vessels early on with the short chains. Um, and and basically, you're right, um, not taking advantage of the. Um, capacity to to store the, you know, the 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 regul- regulated PFAS. So, um, unless we find a way, and I think Don has an idea about that. Unless we find a way to take the short chains out of the equation before the lead vessel. We probably are not really gaining much by letting the the lead vessel bleed through on the short chains. To load it more with the with the regular, with the with the regulated PFAS. So that's the one issue. I guess my position would be, we have to look at when are we having this discussion? Right now, I think. It is in our responsibility to serve water in the end with no contaminants. Um, specifically those that are, that the town voice concerns about, right? So. I would, at least until next year, uh, for the annual meeting, I would proactively replace. Early enough that we never have any breakthrough for the for the finished water, right? So maybe we do let the lead filter. Um, ride it out a little bit longer, like you suggested, Keith, just to learn about the behavior of 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 the saturation. By the social rate, but um, not to the point where we risk that the lag filter is bleeding through. The short chains either into finished water. But um, I do think that um, Don made a statement that that is very important for us to remember. The warrant articles don't apply to Wells four and five. So legally, technically, we don't have a mandate right now to spend the ratepayers' money. To get the short chains out of the water for Wells four and five. So I believe personally, and I might not, I might might be alone with that, but I believe that. Uh, at least next year, we need to have the ratepayer decide what they want to do with Wells four and five. Uh, we we have the mandate pretty clearly for the other wells, but not for four and five. So we need to. Have a warrant article that that we put out in front of the 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 ratepayer, the voter. That says, uh, do you want to extend basically the same level of uh of filtration? For all PFAS compounds, not just the regulated ones, also for Wells four and five. Only then are we really, really, you know, solidly supported by our mandate.
So, well, I haven't seen this Warren article, but we've been talking about it and Don called me after the last meeting. I don't feel like those Warren articles say that we are required to treat down to zero, and I'm concerned about our position on that. Our position is based on a discussion and a PowerPoint presentation. But it doesn't sound like the Warren articles agree with that.
Do we have the verbiage of those? Does anybody have those readily available?
Um, I know that they say it's the Warren articles were 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 worded to reduce PFAS. It didn't say eliminate, it didn't say non-detect. It said to reduce PFAS, that's that's as specific as it got.
They didn't say non-detect?
No.
That's how I remembered on it was to reduce probably all all PFAS, yeah.
Yeah, so um. I'll try to look for him as I speak here, but. The the only thing that did say that the goal was non-detect was in the PowerPoint presentations that. That MBD prepared through Underwood or or Underwood prepared on behalf of MBD. Um, and that that was the goal is to have non-detect. You know, again, that that's for Wells two, three, seven and eight. Um, but obviously, I I think we gotta, we gotta apply the same kind of concept, whatever it is. I think we have to apply uniformly across all of our wells because. I don't think it's appropriate to have the town, all of the town voting on which wells to. Treat down to non-detect and which wells to not treat to non-detect. I think it's got to be consistent because then part of the town's getting detectable PFAS while part of the rest of the town is not. I I just, I think it's got to be a level thing across the whole system. I don't think we can parse it out that way. Um, but I mean, really, obviously, what what the concern is, is how does this impact the rates? And I don't know. And Keith, I don't know if you remember, but I'm trying to remember. I don't even remember if the replacement of media was even considered in the rate study update that was done. In two thousand and eighteen, I know if my memory correct serves me correctly, I thought we planned on an annual. Media replacement for Wells two, three, seven and eight. But I don't remember what that rate study indicated for the frequency of replacement. Of media at Wells four and five. And I gotta think if we relied just back on the settlement agreement in Wells four and five, I think the the idea was every two years. Of media replacement is that, does this, does this ring a bell to you guys?
Um, I'll go by my best memory, but you're right that the rate model didn't carry the extra costs for the GEC because of the first five years. Technically, and at least based on the intent was that St. Cobain was gonna pay for the PFAS related costs. So the O and M. Costs related to the other stuff was just sort of already built into your existing budget. So I do also believe that um, the. Costs that we calculated or agreed to ultimately with St. Cobain was based on an annual annual change out. Certainly wasn't six months. It's possible it was two years, but I think it was, I think it might have been annual. Uh, but I'd have to confirm that, but even whether it was annual or two years, um. It wasn't built into your, it wasn't built into your rates for the first five years.
Okay. I can try to share this. Let's see here. Just so we have it, can you guys see this right now? This is um.
Yeah, I found the same.
That I think this was the article uh for Wells two and three, Rosen, uh, raising appropriate. Ten million nine hundred for a primary purpose of designing, constructing, uh, reduce iron and manganese and PFAS. And that includes water lines and whatnot. Um, so I believe that that was what we. And I could pull this other one up here. This is for well seven and eight. Again, it's for primary purpose, design, construct. Water treatment plant system for Wells for seven and eight to reduce per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. So again, it was to reduce, it does nothing in here that mandated non-detect. But. You can see the word reduce is in there. Um, and I don't know if I have the PowerPoint presentations here, but I do remember that the PowerPoint did talk about. The goal, and it wasn't a commitment, it was a goal of non-detect water and. You know, I and and I think, I think we all want to stay with that goal, at least initially, if if the town. Wants to change that philosophy, they can, somebody can propose warrant articles, but. Um, you know, I don't think we're bound to anything, I guess, is what I'm saying, so. I I'm not against, you know, letting this thing go a little longer, the the lead vessel, we we certainly have the lag vessels there. Um, I I just, you know, I'm just trying to be proactive and try to plan ahead for this so that. It's not a surprise when it comes up.
Uh, I'm sorry, but um. What is, we would say if we add, say, hey, we're gonna change it, what's the turnaround? Uh, you know, for changing the 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 GAC out of the lead. Uh, I mean, how long would it, would it take the, I guess, I'm saying, it's like, if we wait to seventy-five percent, you notice something. You know, is that the time to set place an order because of the timeframe for it to get replaced? I.
It it maybe, I want to say it was a three-week turnaround.
Okay.
And we could, and I did find out we, at the very beginning of this, I thought we needed a swing load. But my understanding is we can operate off of the lag tanks. We wouldn't want to exhaust, fully exhaust the lag tank either, because we need to be able to. Have that, to be able to pull out the the PFAS while we're getting the the uh. Lead tank regen. To to make that swap, so um. But I guess my point would be, I'd like to see, maybe hold off as long as we can, only to, just to. If there's nothing else to collect data, see how things are, how we can operate them, I I guess.
Yeah, one other perspective too is. Wells four and five are the only wells that are being treated. We're still, every other well in town has PFBA in it.
Right.
And it's in the system. So, you know, we're we're beating our heads against the wall, trying to have non-detect PFAS at Wells four and five. At least initially, before we have treatment on all our wells, maybe once we have treatment on all our wells, we're gonna need to then. You know, do something a little proactive, um. Uh, or a little bit more uniform amongst all the wells, I should say, but um. You know, I I'm all about obviously minimizing the PFAS mode, um. But again, it's it's a balance. We're gonna have to, I, what I don't want to do is to do something where. All of a sudden, we're changing filters out a a lot more frequently than we had budgeted and we had predicted in the um. In the rate study and all of a sudden, we have a rate increase that we're gonna need to be faced with. Because of the frequency of changing the media and as I think about this. Um, if we do need to do a rate increase because of the frequency of changing the media, if it's if it's more frequent than we had planned on. I think we would need to put that rate increase to the voters.
Yeah.
And it would be for the purpose of changing the media.
Yeah.
So we'd be kind of letting the voters vote on that.
Yeah.
You know.
But let let the vessels run a little bit longer so you have some more data that you can present to them. That would, wouldn't that be a better thing, you know, than, does it, if, like you mentioned, if you want to go there the next. You know, annual meeting and say, how often do you want to change these things out? You, it would be good to go in there with a lot more data, like, okay, well, you know.
Yeah.
The regulated compounds, you know, after the end of, you know, eight months or somebody bed volumes, it's, you know. Fifty percent through or seventy-five percent, or at least you have a better idea, you know, to give to the voters. If you change these out. You know, very quickly now, you know, you won't have any of that data. You always just rely on the RSSCT. Which is has some accuracy to it, but it's not like the full-blown vessels, you know, data, so.
Ironically, ironically, the fact that we don't, or that the warrant articles say, which were petitioned by voters, as we know. Uh, the the fact that they don't say non-detect actually takes my argument a little bit, you know, out of the equation, uh, out of the game because. My argument earlier was that the voters voted for non-detect. Levels of PFAS in general on the other wells, right? But now that the warrant articles don't say that, I can't argue anymore that we need the voters to first agree on getting PFAS on the non-regulated. Um, PFAS out of the water for Wells four and five. I don't know if you can follow me, but it always makes this discussion easier, right? Because you don't have two standards now that we didn't need to follow anymore. And that we need to get the voters to to approve for those wells that weren't included in the warrant article. So I would actually be more comfortable now to say, let's continue, like I said, Don, um, basically for the foreseeable future. Until we possibly see another rate increase impact based on that decision. And we need to put that additional rate increase out in front of the voter to get approval for. That will be our vote, whether or not the the voters want to have the non-regulated PFAS also filtered to non-detect.
I I have a couple of comments. Um, one, go, I think when it comes to those Warren articles. I I understand what the language says there, but I think the spirit of it was that majority of the voters, they they were there. Or, you know, when they went to that presentation and everything, that there, I think their feeling was they would be to be. Non-detect. Granted, I know the language doesn't say it, but the perception to the public.
Yeah.
Would be that. And I think you're right, maybe the, you know, next year, the Warren article to clarify. You know, so we know exactly what they want and also they have a better understanding. You know, to make a better, a a informed decision. Uh, but my other thing, it's Wells four and five are gonna be different than the other Wells because how close it is to St. Cobain. I I know, and and I know it's a wish list in a sense, but, you know, where they are is the breakthrough coming through so early. With granted, they're not regulated PFAS. But, I mean, is there anything we can do to go say, I know we're beating a dead horse here, but hey, we're already having this breakthrough. You know, is there anything you can, you know, help sweeten the pot to take care of Wells four and five? And you know, another thing too is where we are looking for other um. Water sources, and maybe something down the road, we abandoned four and five with the the newer. Uh, Wells, you know, with newer Wells in be, and where we'd be away from Wells four and five, because I think. Think well, four and five is gonna be our problem child because it's so close to St. Cobain. And I I think maybe that's something we should think about down the road, maybe we abandon four and five. And I, I think maybe that's something we should think about down the road, maybe we abandon four and five. And use different waters, sources.
Or, you know, we may want to look at really what the cost of AR would be, and if it's feasible, that. Would more than likely reduce the O and M costs for media change outs at four and five as well.
I agree.
So.
And when you say, just for the puppy, you're talking about artificial recharge, where we pump water from the Merrick River into infiltration basins. Um, to replenish the aquifer for Wells four and five.
And just to kind of further plug it along, I think that's our future anyways, I think we need to be in the river, but that's way off.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with you Ken, um, I, I do believe the voters were expecting. You know, we presented to them non detect PFAS, and I think that's what they expected. And, and I, I personally think, I, in my mind, I think it's important that we deliver that. Up until or unless there's a change in that philosophy by another vote, you know? And I'm not saying, you know, I do agree, let's let this first vessel go longer, we'll get better data. Um, but I do think that ultimately, as we get to PFBA starting to get through the lag vessel. You know, I, I, I would think about trying to catch that before that broke through. And at least changed out the first vessel and have that refreshed. So that once the PFBA got through the lag vessel. That lag vessel would be the lead vessel, and then we'd have a brand new lag vessel available to catch it as well. So I, I think it's good getting that additional data, I just, I still don't think we know when we're going to pull the trigger on. Replacing the lead vessel, and that's kind of where I was trying to. See if we can just start a dialogue and get people's thoughts about when it made sense to do that, and I. I don't hear that we have a consensus on when exactly what's going to trigger us to do it. But um, at least we're thinking about it and, you know, we can revisit this, but it would be good to have more information. You know, I don't, I can't remember what the um, the PFBA levels are at Wells four and five versus what they are at. Two and three and seven and eight, but I'm hoping they're higher at Wells four and five, and that's. Obviously going to cause them to, to break through faster. And if they're lower at two, three and seven and eight, maybe we'll get a little bit even longer runtime before those. Contaminants break through, um, but you know, it's unfortunate, I guess the one thing I'll just leave everybody with and whoever from the public is watching this. Unfortunately, in Husick Falls, they're not even talking about this. Because San Cobain is changing the lead vessel as soon as PFBA breaks through. And it's, it's San Cobain's problem, but in this town. San Cobain's problem are dumped squarely on MBD, and that's why we're struggling with this right now. So, we're stuck with it, this is our baby, and we're going to have to deal with it. So that's all, I just wanted to get that point across in case anybody in the. Is asking.
With it for now.
For now.
For now. I actually wanted to make one comment, uh, I don't know, I mean, this is extremely crude extrapolation, but if you think about it. So we had between one twenty-eight and two twenty-three, uh, when you look at the PFBA data, it was six point eighty-five. And then seven point oh five, um, so. You could claim, which you probably can, but just maybe to get, to get a little bit of a feeling, that. Up to, let's say, six point five. Um, at any of the test ports, we may not see a breakthrough within the next month, that's what I'm trying to say, so. How do I, how do I explain that? So. I would. Claim a wild guess that if we see breakthrough at seventy-five, at the seventy-five percent port. Somewhere in the area of, let's say. What are we saying, like six part petroleum for PFBA? And we have to watch what happens at the fifty percent port, your next, next, with the next cycle for PFHXA and PFPEA. But if you take those numbers and basically look at the prior month, we should be able to say. When we look at the timeline, what is the threshold that when we see that at seventy-five percent, that we need to plan for breakthrough? I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm trying to say, but uh. We should be able to project from, from whenever we see, you know, at the next port up, or actually, well, previous port down. We should be able to, to, to protect the dates when we see it in the next vessel up, in the next port up. Because these, this is by media volume, right, not by fill height.
Media volume, bed volumes, and, and I think if, just on a quick calc, you, you know, we saw, we saw PFBA breakthrough. Halfway through the vessel, four months in. We're now six months in.
Yeah.
So if that is linear, it's going to be two more months before you might see it at, at, at the outlet.
Well, we should see that to seventy-five percent port pretty much now, right, because it's six months.
If we're right, and if that's linear, then we should see it in the April data, should see it in April data.
Yeah, so that's what we need to look at.
We'll see it pouring into the lag tank first with no risk, like, we'll see it. We'll see what the numbers look like as it goes through the lead tank and be able to better estimate what's going to happen with the lag, lag tank. If that means we use some of that lag tank media this time, I think it's information that's well worth it.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments on this?
Are you at the, the, this idea about um, possibly adding a separate filter media that is. Focusing specifically on the short chains, is that something we wanted to discuss today, or is that premature?
Well, I think, I think it's going to, I mean, that obviously, um, that's going to be the next. Thing that we're going to try to have to figure out how to solve, if there's even a way to solve it. I mean, we knew these short chains were going to break through first, and that's what we're seeing. The question is, is, is there a way to treat that somehow? And, and I don't, I mentioned before about putting a sandwich layer of anion resin somewhere in one of these vessels, would that? Would that have a, a, an ability to catch the short chains better than the carbon is? I know there's some concerns with chlorides and how the chloride affects. Um, the performance of anion resin to remove PFAS compounds. Um, but. I was kind of wondering, so right now, um, you know, we're seeing PFBA. And uh, nothing else, I guess, was breaking through the fifty percent sample port. Is there a way we can take a sample of water out of that port, knowing we're going to see. PFBA in that port and run that water sample through a column of anion resin? Is there a way to make predictions on how successful the anion resin? Would absorb uh, PFBA? And, and I don't know if there's a column test we want to do, or we could also just open up that sample port and run it at. One or two gallons a minute, run it through an actual test vessel of anion resin. And actually calculate your bed volumes that way and just run it to waste, you know, we can do something like that. You know, that, I think that's something we should probably be trying to figure out. You know, what we can do, we, we've got a place set aside in Wells four and five treatment plant. That we were anticipating someday putting test columns in there and running some test columns. You know, and I guess I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just asking the question, at, at what point do we want to try to move on that? And, and actually see if that's, if we can figure out some kind of a, of. A test to be done here, if, if that's a possible way to do it. So I'll just leave, I'll just leave you with that, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, the other thing I don't know is when you put. Obviously, we, we only have two vessels in the building, so we got to keep going back and forth between lead and lag, I don't, I don't think. I'm trying to see a, a possible way of having one vessel be anion resin, the other vessel be carbon, but. Then when you go to swatch, to switch the series of those. You know, now you're, you're going to be loading all of your raw water into an anion vessel and following it with carbon. I'm not really sure that's the way we want to go, is there a way we could put a layer of anion resin? I don't know what happens when you backwash for conditioning, if that's just going to jumble up all the resin and, and re-stratify everything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, it's like, I think, you know, a couple of your points, I think the chlorides do affect things. I don't think you can get a sandwich in there, because the, the way you. Put the media in there is you fluidize it, and then you pump it in there, and then you, then you backwash it such that. You, you sort of lift the media out, so air, uh, water can be flowing through it, so you can rinse off all the fines. So, I think that they would have different, you know, um. Uh, specific gravities and stuff and, and weights, you know, so that, you know, they would stratify in a certain area, once you start to fluidize it. I don't know if that would be the top or the bottom, I have to look into that. So you, you know, you would have that issue, the, the uh, one issue with the resins with the RSSCTs, and we. Uh, we talked with people about this, and uh, with the RSSCTs, the columns are so small. That um, and this was done by CDM, I believe, I'd have to go back and check the records, but I think they did a test, and then they ended up. Breaking, you know, the resins down, they, you know, crap, so they would fit into the column, but that's not, you know. That's not really realistic of what you're going to be doing, you know, so I don't know how representative that is. So if you did do that, I liked your idea, and I'd like to investigate that more of. You know, if you take it out of that seventy-five percent sample port, if that's the one, or whatever one you want to choose, and then run it through. You know, a small vessel itself, you know?
Right.
Say, you know, whatever, a one foot diameter vessel, so it's not a column type of thing, and then run that, and then see what that does, that, that might be a. A, a better test, but I don't know what the, uh, I'd have to go back and look what the chloride levels were in, in four and five, and exactly what that. You know, would be and what resins would be good on that, so.
So wouldn't you want to put the anion resin in front of the carbon?
What are they doing at P's?
The, the resin is lead at P's.
Oh, it is.
The carbon is polishing.
And if you're going to do that, why wouldn't you just do the, the resin test on our raw water?
Yeah. Yes.
I would make it a whole lot easier, I would think.
Well, just for the fact that we already have carbon in place, and. I don't know if we can change out the, you know. I don't know.
You, you can change it out, we actually did, um, you have to have different, uh, uh. You know, intake and discharge headers in your vessels when, when you do that. And we actually did get those on four and five, so if you did want to do that, we would, you would drain the carbon that's in there, and then. Take that out, you know, you know, you take the headers out and put in the new headers, and you do have those right now, and, you know, in stock, I believe they're up at the. Up at the storage tower there, um. But the other thing that, the reason why you settled in on GAC on this one is the settlement agreement that you had with San Cobain. And it was based on, you know, the work that was done by their engineer, that identified that the treatment system would be GAC. So that's how, that's how we initially got settled in on this one.
Right. But of course, the short, the short chains were not a consideration in any of that uh, initial agreement, but.
So why are chlorides an issue at this point? Don't we chlorinate after the vessels?
No, it's the sodium and uh, chlorides in your raw water that takes up the sites on your, on the uh, exchange resins.
Right.
And I don't know what you guys have heard, but I'm, I'm hearing that the short chains are breaking through the resins as well. And that they're quite a bit more expensive than the carbon. So, I think it's worth looking into, but I'm not sure that there's any golden ticket there.
No.
And I believe you are right on that, John, as the, that the, the same chemicals break through and the sort of the same order. It does last longer, but the media costs more, so when you're looking at it on a, you know. It, it might, you know, and it might end up just being a wash, you know, a difference, you know, but. And that column, that uh, area, do you want to just clarify some things, so that column test area that we gave you? There is a line there from your raw water running over to it. Um, there is no, not a line that, you know, I guess we could probably connect up to it, because it goes down in the ground. I guess we could connect up from that port up over to it, Ron, right? You could connect that from one of the sample ports to that line and run it over to that column test area.
I, I think you probably could, but would you want to though? Wouldn't you just want to use the raw water?
Yeah, I was.
Kind of taken away from your sample ports.
Yeah, just kind of following on something that Dawn was saying, do you, you know, do you want to test how treatment is on? Uh, water that's partially treated with the GAC, and then see if that could work as a polisher.
Right. I think I had mentioned uh, one point before about having like a lead and lag. Uh, carbon vessel and putting a vessel of anion in between, not that we have room for that, but. You know, I, I don't know if that would, would benefit, but. I guess I would just say, I guess the problem is, is there's probably nowhere else that we're aware of that are treating. To re- reduce or remove all of the low, the short chain compounds, because. If there was somewhere that was truly trying to achieve non detect of all PFAS. Would be good to know how they're doing it, the only ones that I know of that are doing it is in Husi Falls, and you're doing it by. Wasting the lead vessel carbon as soon as the first PFAS breaks through. Because apparently cost isn't an, an issue over there, so. That's the challenge is we're kind of in uncharted territory, and that's why I'm trying to figure out a way of how we can. Conduct some kind of tests on our own to figure out a way out of this puzzle. And, and I don't know if there's, you know, I don't, I'm not, not expecting you guys to develop a testing program. Um, you know, Underwood to, we're not telling you to do that, but if there's. If there's some kind of information out there that, you know, you can find, if someone is trying to achieve the same thing that we're trying to do. You know, I don't know what else to, to ask, really, I, I don't know if we're at a point where we want to try to look at. Developing our own test method to, to look at different options here or not, but. Just give it some thought, you know, I know we still have a few months to, to play with, but um. That, this is going to be the, the ongoing, you know, um, challenge, I guess. Once we get all of our plants online, they're all going to have carbon, they're all going to have PFBA breaking through first. And if um, you know, if, if we want to maintain non detect PFAS, if our customers still want. Non detect PFAS, the only way that we know of right now to achieve that is to change out the lead vessel carbon. When there's probably eighty percent capacity left for all of the rest of the PFAS. So I'm trying to get a jumpstart on that issue, is just getting it in everybody's mind to think about, and I guess I'll just leave it at that, because. I don't know.
Can I just add one thing, because it is something we chat about too, Dawn, and maybe it's just planting a seed, or maybe part of the strategy is, or is. I know that the district voted to reduce PFAS and the, the goal was non detect, but is there a. Uh, work product that we want to do in parallel that just sorts, there's more research and more study on all PFAS all the time? Is there a dust off on health effects to say that, you know, at some point, maybe. Um, some of this, you know, wouldn't necessarily, not all the short chains would need to be removed, as opposed to just saying we want to remove it. And I'm not suggesting we go there yet, but do we want to sort of freshen up on? Whatever new research on health effects are to be part of this equation?
Um, I mean, that, that, that's something you guys haven't really done in the past, right? When you say we, are you talking about Underwood, or are you just in general?
Yeah, I mean, we, the inclusive, all of us looking towards solutions, and I'm maybe, I'm asking the question on, on whether or not there's appetite for that. I guess is my question.
Well, I have seen um, pretty recent studies that PFBA was linked to, I believe, higher instances of. COVID nineteen, because PFBA tends to attack the lungs, which obviously that's a COVID thing. But again, you know, hopefully we're not going to be in the COVID world in a year or so, or less than a year from. But again, you know, hopefully we're not gonna be in the COVID world in a year or so or less than a year from now. Um, but the fact that PFBA is identified with, um, I believe, attacking the lungs. You know, that that's something that it it doesn't pretend well for PFBA not being an issue. Kind of pretends more for PFBA being an issue. It would be great if the DES or EPA decided to regulate PFBA and maybe to add a cumulative amount of regulated compounds, which would include PFBA as one um, a a combined limit, kind of like Vermont and Massachusetts are doing, because then we would be good to capture PFBA in an MCL that requires media replacement, because then it would be a mandate, it wouldn't be a choice. And that would kind of reopen up things um as far as Wells four and five are concerned, but you know, until that happens, I think it's just gonna be a a decision we're gonna be left to have to struggle with, I guess. But that's a good point, you know, I don't know, you know, PFBA is one of them, the next one coming through is PFP EAs following it and then PFHXA looks like that's gonna be coming through again. You know, a little bit lagging behind PFBA, so it it ultimately will be more than just PFBA at some point, the longer we let it go, obviously. So, all right, I don't know, um, if anybody has any other questions, we could probably move on. I think the next thing that we wanted to go on to is um water availability and allocation. So does anybody have any parting thoughts on this issue before we skip on to the next one? All right. If not, then um this, uh, I guess this. Okay, Wolf.
Lorene was asking for a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hello, figured I'd just jump right in. I'm listening and I appreciate the discussion. Peter, you raised a lot of really good points. I agree with what you're saying about um letting this play out a little bit longer, because first of all, only Wells four and five are being filtered right now for PFAS. Kind of ironically, the other ones still have the presence, so the community wouldn't be blindsided by this at this point, because the expectation is we would be in a better place by fall or the end of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty-two, right? So we're kind of in a place where you do have the luxury of experimenting a little bit. And unfortunately, we are in an experimental phase. Uh, the issue of chloride is very important, I think, I don't know how much um you see, you probably get same millings as I do all the time, all these webinars about water treatment are coming through continually right now. And the issue of chlorides is significant and um the chemistry of water seems to be very important. Especially to us as a manufacturing impacted facility where the chlorides coming out of Saint Gobain, they're onsite testing and all the others testing air and water. Every data point there shows very, very high levels of chlorides, so that's just something to consider. So um, I'm listening to all this and I'm thinking, are there any suggestions I could make that might be helpful to you? And I jotted down a few brief ones that you may or may not follow up on. Um, I understand the issue is we're comparing to peas. Peas is the resin bed that they added in, but peas is also A triple F and pass contamination, right? Granted, that stuff doesn't go away. Husick Falls, all we know there is GAK only swapping quicker. So we don't have anything to learn from them, do we, about what's really happening and what percentage? So you guys are just really on your own. So one of the thoughts I had is maybe checking with uh North Carolina. Water utilities down there in Brunswick and Wilmington, because their experience in filtering has been from Chamois. Now, it is not just a rumor, it is a fact that Chamois makes the formulations of PTFE that Saint Gobain is using here. If anybody needs backup of that, I have labels showing it, so it's something that um I'm not just giving my opinion. I can show that from what they received there at Saint Gobain, I have that information. So Wilmington and Brunswick Water Utilities might be good places. I know they've been working on this for a while down there and their contamination, as you may recall, focused on Gen X initially and the short chains, so they are they didn't even start looking at long chains, you know, here we're looking at legacy contamination, so they would be a good place. Um, I also see a lot of research coming out of the STEEP program at URI about water treatment and remediation, and there's some crazy chemical toxicological brilliant people involved there, so that's URI um STEEP Research Program, they might be good to check with. Also, you probably can consult with the EPA ORD because they were giving guidance in the past on all kinds of things. And in the past administration, they were gearing the role of government more towards uh support and information, you know, like, okay, we're gonna give you the tools for what you need. Then your state and your local will decide what to do. So they were kind of shifting the role to government of less regulatory and more of a consult. So some of that information could help us. Or new Clark or new Assistant Commissioner is, as you probably know, he was the EPA Region One um head, assigned in maybe October of twenty nineteen. He also has done a lot of work um in a lot of involvement with DuPont, which kind of tied his hands a bit. Is EPA Director because he had to excuse himself from work in that area because he had a conflict of interest. Which is maybe why he's had to step down from that position. So I don't know what this is gonna mean for New Hampshire. Me being me, I have my my worries, of course, but he may be able to be helpful in this case, you know, he may be a good person to ask about this, given his work with DuPont, he may have access to a little bit more of the chemistry of of what we're getting and he will take Clark's place, so he heads the investigations, he heads all that, you know, stuff that you need. So I think, I don't know if he's officially sworn in yet or what the procedure is. You know, I saw the picture of him shaking hands with uh Bob Scott, so I know he's definitely been assigned. But a sit down with him is something that I would also recommend. And you can directly go to the EPA ORD and you can ask that um request for a consult and they will, they will do that. Because they know that all across the country, we're in this situation where we need help. We don't have the resources to do all this research on our own, right? And I think that's it, I'm reading my my uh my handwriting. One more point to make about the toxicological studies is in an ideal world, water regulations are driven by health, right? And toxicological studies, so ATSDR has tox profiles on all of these. There's plenty of research and it's been a bit held up because it becomes really a big problem if we take health effects with all these PFAS, including the short chain, and we apply it all to water regulations. The government goes, uh-oh, the DOD goes, uh-oh, industry goes, uh-oh, and that's just the way it is. We can't change that. So PFBA, PFPA and PFHXA, they all do have tox profiles in the work. Uh, one of them was just uh redone because they found that it wasn't done correctly last year. In fact, um, people had a hand in editing it, who are the people who make it. So you will be seeing a lot of that coming out shortly. And I would just, you know, urge you to be a step ahead as we have been in Meramec. But I do understand this is really, really complicated, you know, the chemistry and the engineering and all the pieces. So thank you, all of you, you're you're just putting in immense amounts of time and it's it's really appreciated by the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lori, I appreciate those comments and um, those are good, good advice there. So um, we'll take you up on that. Thanks. All right, um, I don't see any other um hands up on the um participant list. So if we, uh, if everybody's good on that topic, uh, we can move on to the um the water availability and allocation status. I'm not sure, this, I thought there was something here in our um what is this, just a um water supply capacity policy back in two thousand and eleven, I guess, that's in our packet?
Yeah, it was just something that was put together, um. It was started, it was never finished, so if if we wanted to continue that effort, come up with a policy, I just wanted to, we wanted to throw this in. And then we also threw in a copy of the form, uh, the water availability, uh, not the uh letter, I'm just, let me rephrase that. The water and fire sprinkler service entrance application, if somebody, this is what they'd be filling out when they come in requesting a uh, a service.
I I have a couple of ideas about that, or a couple of questions, so um like a a new water connection, right? Anybody that wants to uh connect to the system or expand their usage. I know we have the uh connection fees, right, and that are serving as a as a buy-in into the established infrastructure that the ratepayers have paid over the years to to develop. But um, I guess I wanted to understand a little bit. You know, how how we really manage that and how we determine those to be still appropriate, because obviously, right now, the district is spending unprecedented amounts of money into the water system. And and how is this investment that the district and the ratepayers are doing right now? How is that reflected in 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 the connection fees for for new customers or customers that expand their their connection, for example, adding like a, like a, you know, sprinkler system or something? And uh, obviously, that's one of the things that everybody in town is is um very concerned about the uh the apartments that are being built left and right and and you know, what kind of authority can we impose on on those um on those developments, for example, to ensure that maybe they can't have an irrigation system, outside irrigation system. You know, like, like we did at MVD, maybe we need to insist that there's um, that there's a I don't know if it's it's an ordinance or what it might be, uh, something that basically says you guys can uh can put planners out there with um self-sustaining you know, shrubbery that 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 is able to to survive without outside irrigation. Uh, even during dry spot, dry spots, but um, what you can do is have large, you know, lustrous amounts of of planters full of grass that need to be artificially artificially irrigated. I would certainly like to see that we have a discussion about those kinds of things, maybe not today, but in the near future.
Wolf, I can speak to a couple of things real quick, and I know tomorrow we're getting together on conservation rates. And in fact, the last point you just made is something that we will be carrying in that discussion. That is, whatever we do for conservation rates, I think we want to tie it to maybe adjusting rate rules and rates and ordinances. One of the uh, one of the fees that we have been updating regularly with you or for you is the SDC. And that that is adjusted based on your assets, and as you increase your assets, that that fee can, that fee changes accordingly. So that's really the one fee that's based on the investments that you're making. So that fee presumably should go up as long as the asset value in your books go up, which it should. Um, to some degree, though, Wolf, because there's debt on the project, the debt usually gets there's an adjustment for the debt, because the people that are connecting will also be helping pay the debt. So, but anyway, there, that that does get regularly updated, probably it's been a couple few years now, so it's time to do it again. But those, I just wanted to touch on those.
Didn't we adjust that, Keith, the last time we did our our uh we adjusted the schedule of rates, I believe we we did adjust the uh SDC as well.
Yeah, that would have been in eighteen, probably, early nineteen, I'm guessing, I was just looking to make sure, but that's probably about right.
Well, and how regulated are we in making adjustments there? Can we, can we, you know, do we need to follow um you know, state guidelines, for example, as far as this adjustment goes? Or can we also make business decisions that say, you know what, we're gonna bump this up pretty good, because we want to discourage uh, you know, lawn, um, you know, planners in in, let's say, large apartment um complexes.
The 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 standard is that you just have to have a basis. Um, I think, you know, you would be putting, my experiences, which if you were starting to just raise rates to deter something you don't like is doesn't have a basis, so you you you, you know, it would work until somebody objects. And if they take you to court, then you'd have to be able to stand on the choices you made and yeah, but yeah, the the, everything we've done, you know, is based on industry standard, the state doesn't really regulate it. Uh, you know, it's it's self-regulating, but we use AWWA's that guidance.
I think we need to talk about that, because I think there's leeway.
Well, there is, and there is some leeway, especially when you're starting to look at some of these peak demands and everything in Meramec is about peaks. And 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 peaks are expensive to fix, and so, you know, that's that's where I think you do have leeway.
Well, and especially because we can't distinguish between filtered water and non-filtered water. All all the irrigation peaks are, they have to be filtered water, right? It's it's uh, it's escalated, that cost impact for peaks, to cover the peaks is even escalated now.
Yeah, so Wolf's talk, you know, some of the conservation things we looked at with you in January, we're gonna speak to tomorrow, tomorrow night in our session.
So I I guess just a couple of things I wanted to um add in there is um, I think we're um I'm not sure where we stand with the definition of um source capacity and whatnot in in the DES regulations, if if we've looked at that. I think it talks about the capacity of all wells with the largest well being out of service. But um, one of the things is our wells are not necessarily pumping at their uh approved capacity, it's usually pumping at less than our approved capacity. So maybe we should be plugging in like realistic pumping rates in that scenario and see how we really compare. So that's one thing, and then the other thing is um I don't know if we're, I I think I want, I've seen on some hands, we're we're including a million gallons a day as available water capacity from Penachuk. And in other places, we're assuming that we're not counting that as available capacity. Um, but obviously, I believe we're losing money every gallon we purchase from Penachuk, because we're buying it at a higher rate than we're selling it for. And I know there's some wheel, water wheeling deal that we have for supplying uh Penachuk's um, system out in Bedford. And and I think, you know, that, I think we get additional credit on that amount of water. But it just, it just seems like we're, we're gonna be always fighting a battle. They're including um Penachuk as an available source. That might not be something that we want to look at as including Penachuk, you know? Or is there a way, I don't know how we can adjust the cost? This is probably getting into the the tiered rate system a little bit too, you know, but a- and then the only other thing I wanted to say is um a couple of things is, when we get an application for water allocation, um, I believe from what I was told is, you know, there's a, there's an item in there to ask if they're going to use irrigation water. In my experience, when people talk about irrigation water, they always underestimate it. Um, and in in my experience, the actual application of irrigation water is factors of three or even four times the amount of non-irrigation water. So if if we're only looking at peaking factors of, you know, two, two and a half, are we really not, is that really representative of what we're seeing in the system? You know, as far as I understand, last year, we saw some peak demand days of of five million gallons. And I think it was even over five when you factored in the drawdown of the tanks as well. You know, so when we're looking at a regular, a winter time demand of less than two million gallons, you know, that we we might be over two and a half times a peaking factor. Um, and and then as far as enforcement, I don't know, you know, let's let's say someone applies for an allocation and if they say we're just gonna have potable demand, we're not doing any irrigation. Who's to stop them from putting an irrigation system in and would we ever even realize that, you know? Um, a- and if they did say, yeah, we're gonna use this amount of irrigation water in our allegation, allocation application, how do we actually confirm that they're not using more than that? Because it, this is really what's leading us into the shortages in in the summer, if we're gonna have shortages, it's it's the over irrigation, you know? So I'm just putting that out there, I don't have answers, I'm I'm just identifying things that that I wanna think about, you know?
The Service Engines application does not, that that I see here in our package does not have any um, you know, checkbox or quality of some sorts that indicates. you know, checkbox or quality of some sorts that indicates that an application includes irrigation.
Right, so there's, you know, there's something that-
It doesn't, typically, what we, when we'd ask for that would be when we're reviewing the project. When, when Keith or Underwood would ask for what their demands are, that's what we would be if there was any, if they put any in, a lot of times, they don't give us irrigation demands, it's just their, their domestic use.
That's, that's a problem because even if they would give us the annual average, right, including the irrigation, which in their eyes probably would be fair, right, but it doesn't reflect the dynamic effects, right, the, the accumulative effects of the irrigation peaks. So we really need to-
So I, I guess on the, the flip side of that, Wolf, we're only okaying, when we give them a water availability letter, we're only okay, okaying or giving them the, the ability to use potable water, domestic water, not, we're not okaying irrigation water, so I think if we needed to impose stricter restrictions, we could do that.
I don't understand that comment.
Well, I can, I can add, maybe Rod, because he, he's also referring to the last time we did a review. The last time we looked at one of the larger users was in January twenty twenty, and we only approved and reviewed and told them that irrigation wasn't included because they didn't request it. And so the authorization to allow those guys to connect was just based on domestic use with the presumption that they weren't irrigated.
When you say those guys, who, who are we talking about?
This one was the residential apartments at Merrimack Plaza.
Okay, meaning they never, and let's, let's take that name out, so anybody that's, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, so anybody that would apply for a service entrance application that would not include irrigation in the in this, well, the service line size and meter size, it's not asking for the amount of consumptions, it's asking for for what kind of line we run there. And I'm assuming that we usually are required to oversize that feed, right? So it doesn't really tell us what anybody's gonna do with that water, whether or not they're gonna use it for irrigation and use three or four times the amount of household usage. Do they?
I'm not sure the form you're looking at, I, I, I know that we don't get involved with all of them, we tend to get involved with the large ones, and we address irrigation, and I can't, some of them say no irrigation, some of them say they do want irrigation, and so that we address that if they do. In the case, the prime example is premium outlets, they wanted irrigation, so that was considered in the application and the review.
I guess what Wolf is saying, I think I have this up right now.
Yep.
I don't actually see a volume request on this form anywhere.
And it's not, so this form, so when they're coming in, in their, their we're reviewing that project, they, we would ask for their demands. Once it's all okay, they would get a letter of
Water availability?
Thank you, a water availability letter, and attached to that would be the recommendation from from Underwood, and if, you know, whatever restrictions there were. When they come in, and if, so it's a large housing development, let's say, each property, when they came in and started developing each property, that, that's the form they would fill out to request service. So whether you-
I feel that we're losing, I feel that we're, we're, we're not seeing at all projecting the summertime effects of irrigation by, by not quantifying that. Because, I mean, this, this, this form specifically, service line size and meter size, which means pretty much whoever is signing that form can suck out of that water line as much water as they want to, as long as they pay for it.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I, what, what I would think would be reasonable is when they come in for a water allocation, they need to tell us what would be the peak usage that they're looking for, including irrigation and potable demand, and have that number of gallons somewhere in a file. And if there was ever a question, we can actually look at one of their water bills in the summer, and we can clearly see if they're using more than their allocation request. So I think what's happening is they're coming in with an allocation request, and they're probably averaging out over three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And we're saying, oh, yeah, that's not a lot of water, no problem, you know, and I think we've kind of been, I, I mean, we've never refused anybody, we've never even second-guessed any allocation that I'm aware of. But, but yet, I'm not convinced that-
We, we have, we've, we've asked questions on, on allocations, I know that's, we've gone back and forth from Underwood to and I, I wanted to even say it was the outlets, I think, yeah, that's a good point, Joe, thank you. That was, that went back and forth for a long time. I wasn't part of those negotiations, or, but I know Keith was, but I, I believe there was questions on what they were gonna be using and how much they were gonna be using and, and all of that.
I, I think the point is that we have X numbers of properties in town, right, X number certain amount of properties in town, and it is probably safe to say that more and more people are adding irrigation versus people that are maybe discontinuing using irrigation. Yeah. Right, so we have a, we have a, a, a sneaking escalation of our water consumption in town due to irrigation, which we know doubles, triples, quadruples our water usage in summer, our peak usage. So if we don't curb that somehow for future developments and future applications, that's just gonna continue that trend. And it's gonna, it, our problem is not so much the overall water consumption, right, it's the peak demand in summer. It's those three months in summer, right? And those are, those peak demands are, are, are no longer under control. So and, and my concern is that we're not just not properly curbing, curving that with future developments, but also even existing ones, right, I mean, you almost want to think about, so again, you have one neighbor that puts it in the irrigation system and decides to water every day, and I guess that's where the tiered rates come in, granted, okay? But there's, there's, there's another neighbor that doesn't do that. The neighbor that doesn't do that is still paying for the excess filtration of water, or for the filtration of excess water, excess water, I should say, that we now have to provide to that, to that neighbor that, that is watering twice a day.
And I think maybe that's where the, when the tiered rates come into, if, if that's the way we choose to go, I think we need to set those accordingly to, to if we need to make that a purchase from, from Penachuk, then it's not gonna cost us any money.
Right.
If we- Well, you almost want to think about, is it, is it something that we can, and maybe it's going a little bit overboard, but could we put in a permit request to install an irrigation system? And users that want to install an irrigation system need to pay, you know, a, a connection fee, a service entrance fee?
We probably could, I, I think it'd be, that may be tough on the residential end of it. Just because that's something you could, you could go down in your basement, poke a hole through your wall and, and run your irrigation out and run it off of what's already there, not having to have another line run. Anything coming in, I guess anything new, you know, the, the apartments, that kind of stuff, probably would be easy, that would be easier on that end to, to set that up. I just think on the, which is still residential, but I guess more so homes, individual homes, I guess would be a little bit more difficult to, to track.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to bog the staff down with additional, you know, mundane little irrigation permits here and there, but I'm, I'm kind of looking at more big picture items, just I'm kind of wondering about if we allocate a certain project, a certain gallons, you know, per day, how do we know that they're actually complying with that? I don't think we're following up at all and looking at their water usage and making sure they're not using more, you know, maybe they're using double, triple what their allocated, allocation was. Maybe they're not, maybe they're using half, I, I don't know. And-
Isn't the issue become what kind of teeth is behind that? What if they are, Don, what are we gonna do?
Well, then maybe we gotta put something in place that says if you are, if you overallocate your, your usage, you have to pay a higher rate or something, you know, a fine or, I don't know.
Well, technically, if you use the data that we have, which is everybody's bill, take the bills and sort them from largest to smallest, now you know where to start, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I would do.
That's true.
Who cares if Joe Schmo's got a sprinkler system, if it's only an extra fifty dollars on his bill every month?
So the only issue with that is, though, is, look at it this way, if a project comes in, if it's a mixed-use development, they come in, you know, one in the north side of town that's got a multitude of different buildings, they come in and say, we're gonna need this much water. Now, when it's all done and built out, that might be ten different customers of ours because each building is a separate customer, and we'd have to kind of know which customers to add together to compare against the original allocation.
Yeah, that would fall through the cracks, I think, I don't-
Yeah, it's just a tough way to enforce it, and that's why I'm kind of wondering, are they coming in with a fictitiously low number and saying, oh, yeah, we're gonna use irrigation and average it out over three hundred and sixty-five days, and the next thing you know is the allocation looks really small, we give them the allocation, and they're using two or three times that amount for three months in the summer, and that's killing us. I, I don't know how, I don't, I don't have the answer, I'm just trying to identify the problem first before we can try to find how to solve it, you know? But I, I don't know, it seems like there is a problem because you know, I know there are reasons why we ran short on water last year, which hopefully have been not in place this summer, but-
Can I, can I share a graph, a couple charts that I have that maybe would help put some perspective on it too, because I just want to make sure that's part of the conversation?
Yeah, how do I give? I don't know how to do this.
You can.
I think he may, did you ever take it back, or does he still have?
I can't do it right now.
Okay.
What do I do? You don't do anything?
It's Joe. Jill has to do it.
Looks like I'm in, all right. One of the things I wanna, I wanna point out, because this is gonna come out, okay, you can't see it yet. Now you can see it. These are, these are some charts that are gonna come out to the, from the master plan when we give you the update. I want to point to this thing, this is, this is what was projected back in two thousand and fourteen, we were targeting a supply, a demand, a supply of five point nine, you needed five point nine in town. Okay, you've been using historically four point three to five point four max day, I'm talking about the highest day of the year out of three hundred and sixty-five days, okay? What's interesting about that is you, you have seen a trend, this is that max day, so this, for every year since two thousand and four, we track the highest day of the demands and out of your sources, and back in two thousand and seven and eight, it was five point four, it never exceeded five point four, and it's been slowly trending downward. So the idea that, yes, maybe there is more irrigation, but there's either more efficiency or there's something we're doing better than we were ten, ten or fifteen years ago. The highest day we saw in twenty twenty from your well production logs was right here, was about four and a half, four point six million, and to your point, Don, you drew down your tanks, we knew that during that end of June, we were dropping the tanks down, but we only saw a five MGD demand in June of twenty twenty, still below our target of five point nine. I put, and what we say is your available level right now is five point four, admittedly, if all your wells are running at a hundred percent. And let me, let me show you how that, that looks, this is the chart that we pay attention to here. The current demand that you need, we say you need today is five point four, all your wells clicking at a hundred percent provide that. Wells three or nine now, if it gets replaced, Wells two is purple, Wells four and five is blue, and, and well, well, seven and eight here is orange. The-
Is that approved capacity, or is that actual realistic pumping capacity?
It's a little bit of both, because on well two, I think you're approved up to fifteen hundred, but I think this only represents eleven hundred. It's more, it's more recently sort of what we see as, as, as being used, but, but they still don't produce that all the time, there's still some inefficiencies, so, you know, we're starting to use a fifteen percent sort of as a target, as an efficiency number, just to say, okay, if the permitted well in historical use is a thousand, we're just gonna assume it's eight hundred and fifty. So when we, so we are, we're looking for new yell, sources, artificial recharge, and Mitchell Woods, and that's what's gonna be gained here, so our target is to get you to five, above to five point nine, but we're actually gonna get you to six point eight, which allows for that fifteen percent, okay? The point being, I guess, is this is all about the max day demands, we are seeing trends downward because things are being done better. Last thing I want to show you is, is this chart here, we do track to some degree, I think this goes to your point too, that we are tracking what was approved for the larger connections, average and max days, but I don't know, I don't know how much has been looked at as to, are we actually seeing that, or is that actually what they are using? But, but I, I do want you to know that there is, there are looks at, and, and tracking of, of some of the, of, you know, the more significant developments in town, we're not doing this for the small houses or duplexes, but the multi-use and the larger ones we are.
You're, you're right there, you're looking at a peaking factor of one point five. Is that the average day to the peak day use, is that what you're looking at?
Max day, yep. And so, like I said, some of these had irrigation, some of them didn't, but, you know, and, and but that was what was approved.
Yeah. And you think that one point five is a, a sufficient number, is, is that based on data from our system, or is that just out of a textbook somewhere?
It's probably out of, it's, i- if they don't give us real data, which you write, irrigation data is very difficult to get even from the developer who's trying to, who may want it, they just don't, they really don't know, so this is, this is a number that we use for planning.
But I'm not surprised that a big property like, like a development, you know, apartment development isn't necessarily using that, that much more irrigation over the household consumption, right, because you have twenty, fifty, a hundred apartments that are setting the baseline of the consumption. Right, so if you, if, if you're irrigating a couple planners out in the parking lot, that's, that's a small portion of the overall consumption. While if you use every residential area, like my property, for example, right, is, is, is a four-person household, but I have an, an acre that, that I irrigate. So the, the lawn irrigation to individual person, you know, consumption is probably actually much more disadvantageous in, 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 in private properties, individual dwellings, single-family homes.
Can you go up a couple pages? I want, there was a table at the beginning there. Yeah, keep going up. Keep going. Right, yeah, that, was that the one? Yeah, is, does Penachuk, is Penachuk in here anyway? Yeah, so it's got seven hundred gallons a minute, right?
Yeah, so what we're saying here is, is, is if your wells are clicking at a hundred percent, you've got five point four MGD capacity without Penachuk. With Penachuk, you get another million gallons at six point four.
And that, and that, those numbers are not quite the approved capacity, those are more realistic pumping rates?
In the case of well, number, Ron may be able to help me a little bit on this, a case of well number two and four and five, I think they're pretty realistic. Seven, seven and eight may be a little optimistic on this one. How, how about well three, Ron?
Three dispatch, so that's, that might be a little bit, little bit high for well three. Off, uh, yeah, I see well two, we're, we're right around nine hundred to a thousand gallons a minute. Uh, I mean, it fluctuates up and down, obviously, with, is the tank heights and stuff. Probably could use a little bit of, little tweaking, but for the most part, I think it's pretty close.
Yeah, so it's, and, and so this is maximum source, I think, and then um, we have to adjust it down, and we could use that fifteen percent is what we're starting to use um, for the master plan. But we haven't, what we see in a five, I think five was June, five was June. That was, that's our best estimate of what happened at June. I think it's a pretty good estimate, because we actually calculated what we were taking out of the tank every day, because your sources weren't keeping up.
Right. Alright, so I mean, what it looks like is having wells four or five online this summer and having a Penta Chuck auxiliary connection that doesn't have a broken valve. If we need to rely on that this, this summer, we should be in a better position than we were last summer.
I, I would agree. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, and I'm, I, I, I'm not trying to suggest, you know, decisions shouldn't be made one way or the other. I just wanna make sure we're all looking at the same data, cause that does, I think it does help in your decision making.
Yeah. Alright.
And we'll, we can talk a little bit more about that when we talk about rates, cause some of this does play into the rates, especially for the conservation structure.
Quick question, um, in that table, it said uh, for wells four and five, I thought it said four hundred and twenty gallons per minute uh, for sustained pumping due to the aquifer limitations. Uh, define sustained in terms of how many days in a row.
That's three hundred and sixty-five days at four twenty. That's, so the sustained capacity of four hundred and twenty gallons a minute can be done for three hundred and sixty-five days in a row, for the whole year.
So, so if we had an exceptionally hot summer and we needed to pump for, for let's say, six weeks straight, at full capacity, we could do that.
You could.
We wouldn't have to drop to four hundred and twenty.
No, you can pump higher rates in the summer, as long as it sort of yields out on average at four twenty.
Okay, yeah, we can go up to eight seventy-five.
Okay.
And this is why you're doing AR, because what Jamie's trying to do is get you to the eight twenty-five, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Alright, anybody have any other questions on this, or um, can move along if, if there are no other questions?
I'll share those charts with you, Dawn. I'll just email them, probably email them right when I hang up, so you guys will have them.
Okay, that's good. So is that, I guess that was the last thing on Underwood's list, as far as I can tell, right? I don't know if you guys have any other um, last comments, or anybody else have any other questions for Underwood on any of this? Let's see here.
Again, me. Um, timeline for deliverables. I think that's something we've been talking about from the last meetings, and you guys have quite a bit of a
Yes.
I would like to really see a timeline for some of the things like the, you know, corrosion control and, and some of these things. When can we expect some, some?
You, you are wrapping up the um, the cost normalization study of all the different source options too, right? That, that's still forthcoming, right?
Yeah, I, I have, I believe everything's gonna be delivered in draft form for review this week or next week. We had said last meeting that it would all be in April, and it's gonna be in April. And uh, we had already delivered the, the rate conservation rates, but the uh, the master plan is, I, it's just in final review right now. In fact, it'll probably go out this week. Conservation, I think will go out next week. So we had, and we had committed to April at our last meeting, and that's gonna happen.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Any other questions, room anybody? Okay, if not, then I guess we could probably move on, I think um, is that all we need, uh, Underwood for at the, for the rest of the meeting, from what I can tell, I think? I know there's some action items in there, but I don't think there's anything, I'm just looking over them now. Just a cost of service study, which was ongoing. And then the rate structure, which is, we're gonna handle tomorrow. So I don't see any other things under, uh, Underwood. There's a action item list that we carry. And um, those are the only two things I see anything from Underwood on there. So I, I guess that's probably all. I guess you guys are um, complete with what you wanted to present, so um, thanks for that, and uh, we'll catch you tomorrow afternoon as well, right?
That's right. Talk rates, guys. Thanks, guys. Bye.
Alright.
Bye.
Bye.
Can, can you guys still hear us?
Yeah, we can't see you.
All of a sudden, just, I don't know what happened. We just lost picture on our end, but.
There you are.
That was weird.
Alright, so keep going on the agenda here. The next item is the Board of Commissioners to discuss the request to change the voting process to be in line with the town. Uh, actually, that was tabled to May. So I just wanted to point that out. Um, I guess we're not gonna discuss it. We'll take that up at the next meeting. Um, so the next thing in line is um, uh, minutes from the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. As well as the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one non-public session. Um, so let's start with the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular session. Anybody have any um, comments or edits to make to those minutes? If not, someone can move the minutes.
So move.
Motion to approve the minutes of uh, March fifteenth made by Wolf. Anybody second those?
Second.
Second by John. Um, we'll do a roll call and vote to approve those minutes as written. Uh, Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
John? Uh, Paul?
I vote aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And myself in favor, so the, uh, March fifteen minutes carry five zero zero. And then the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one non-public session. Uh, the only thing I wanna mention on this one is if anybody has any specific comments that they wanna discuss on those minutes, because they're non-public, we probably should not discuss the contents of those minutes. But if no one has any corrections, or doesn't have anything that they need to discuss on those minutes, we can still approve them in the public session that we're in now. So that being said, is any, go ahead.
Sorry, Don, it's also that um, the revised non-public minutes that we're looking at.
Right.
Nothing.
Yeah, I saw that email.
Okay.
Saw that email too.
It's not gonna be the same letter in your packet.
So there was an email, um, when did that come around? Four o'clock earlier? Uh, one forty-four, let me see here. Anyway. If uh, if you guys wanna table these for the next meeting, or you can go ahead and um, vote to move them as written.
So I saw the requests and what Kerry was asking, but I didn't actually get a chance to read them. Um, if it is what it says it is, I'm fine with it.
It were edited by our legal department.
Okay. So is that a motion, John, that you made to accept?
Sure, I'm moving accept them.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, motion by John, second by Ken. Um, any comments? If not, then we'll go through a roll call. John, you, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ken?
Aye.
Uh, Paul?
I'm staying in.
Paul's abstaining, and Wolf?
In favor.
In favor, and I'm in favor as well, so that, that, uh, the minutes, the um, non-public session for March eighteenth is approved. The minutes are approved, four zero one, with Commissioner McLaughlin abstaining. Those don't need to be sealed, right? Or do they?
They were already sealed.
Yeah, they were sealed at the meeting.
They were, okay, great. Alright, so that's it for the minutes, right? Let's see, the only, uh, the next item on the agenda is the action items from the previous meetings. And uh, we got one page of those. Item number two. I don't think there's anything new to report on that item.
No, that'll probably be next, next uh, meeting we'll have. I can have that for you.
Okay.
The next, the next quarter.
Uh, did we resolve the next one, the item twelve about uh, capital reserve funds for well development?
You know, I need to get back in touch with uh, Kerry. She, it's with her, and I do not recall getting a reply on that.
Okay.
So I need to, I need to get with her.
Uh, the next one, number thirteen, in investment uh, template for disaster recovery. I know that's kind of an ongoing thing.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Still in progress.
Still in progress, yes.
Uh, number nineteen, I think that was a follow-up with Underwood and, and Emery and Garrett to graph the water quality. Which I, I think that's sort of an ongoing item as well, correct? Number nineteen there?
Yes.
Is there um, is there an expectation maybe when the next, the graphs will be updated next? I think, were they just updated not that long ago? I'm trying to remember. Anyway, I guess we can continue.
You know, I'm not sure, I, I um, I can, I can talk to Keith. I'll give Keith a good talk to tomorrow and find out when uh,
When they update him again?
Yeah.
Okay. And then number twenty-three, the results of PFAS sample points in the distribution system. I think that, that probably can get continued to another, another meeting. I don't think we have that information for tonight, right?
Did, I think we, did we already go over that, or, or did you want it like written out, listed out? So I think we've.
Yeah, I think you did send those around, right?
After the meeting, cause you CC'd me on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a report on it. Um, I looked at some of the reports, but um, yeah, I remember seeing that.
Right. I thought we had discussed at one point, the staff was gonna try to graph those out if we had time or something, but obviously with the, I think with the annual meeting going on and all that, I'm sure everybody was running around pretty busy.
We can, uh, we could take a look at it, but wish, I mean, with uh, it, it won't, probably wouldn't be in the near future. We've, we're, we're in the middle of working on CCR, um.
Okay.
You guys want me to talk to Alpha about providing that information? I'm sure they can provide a spreadsheet.
Talk to who?
Alpha.
Yeah, then that, that might be not a bad idea. They might go throw it right in a graph.
Well, at least a spreadsheet that we convert to a graph. I, I'll talk to him.
That would be great if it was in a spreadsheet. That would, I mean, graphing it would be a pretty simple thing, once it's in one spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent positive they can do that.
I thought you said Alfred.
Good, John, if you can do that. Alright, um, what was the next one? Twenty-four, we already talked to Underwood. I know that's kind of um, in progress. Um, the result restriction bylaw. Think she did get back to us on some of that, right?
You know, I think, I believe she did. I'll have to go back and look at that. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on if we get the full question answered.
Right, right. Um, and twenty-nine, I, I, I would assume we probably haven't had a lot of time to um, make a lot of progress on the salt mitigation webinar. Um, unless you have anything to report on that.
No, we're, we're still working through that, but um, I mean, the the whole um, presentation's up on the website anyways. So it shouldn't be a big deal.
Alright, um, and let's see, we're uh, number thirty-one, I think we're gonna get back to Kerry on that. Number thirty-three. Um, we're gonna be addressing that tomorrow. And number thirty-four, um.
Twenty-four and thirty-one the same?
Which one? Thirty-one and thirty-four?
No, twenty-four and thirty-one. I'm sorry, twenty-eight and thirty-one.
Yeah. It is the same. I can barely read.
Ken, Kerry to review the legalities of salt restriction bylaw is thirty-one. Run monitor to contact Kerry about legalities of salt restriction bylaw.
Right. So.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, why don't we get rid of twenty-eight? Cause it seems like the ball is more in Kerry's court on that one, I think. So if you want, Amanda, if everybody feels um, agrees, we could probably get rid of number twenty-eight. Okay.
Sure.
Alright, let's do that. And I think number thirty-four, I, I don't know how that really applies. I guess we can leave it on there. Maybe, maybe we can discuss this tomorrow, cause I think it ties in with the uh, rate um, session. But I don't know that, I don't know that we wanna tie it into the sewage billing with the town. So I guess we'll just leave that. Let's try to remember to talk about that tomorrow.
Yep.
Alright, uh, so that does it for the action items. Um, next item on the agenda is old business. I don't know if anybody has any old business to bring up?
Aye.
If not, then we can move on to new business. Anybody have any new business to bring up?
I do.
Okay.
Yep, we haven't talked about the treasurer position that needs appointed.
Oh, yeah.
After the annual meeting.
Yep, we've got the job descriptions. I'm not sure if Michelle's got it out there yet, but I did talk to Kathy Stack. She's gonna stick around for a couple months, or until we get somebody um, to interview, do, until we get the interviews done and such. She'll, she'll still be approving payroll and doing the sign-offs and such.
And Lynn Christensen had, Chris Tenzin has also offered to uh, pitch in if Kathy wasn't available.
Yeah, she did mention that.
So, but uh, what, what is gonna be our process here? So you guys have job descriptions, gonna be posted, and we're gonna, you're gonna interview, and then we're gonna send it to us, or?
I guess that's kinda what I envisioned. It would be, we'd put out like a uh, a position that needs to be filled for, for the district, and, and then we can do interviews from there.
And is this gonna be a volunteer position, or is this?
It, it is a.
It's a higher.
It's a high-paying position.
Hundred bucks a month?
Two, I think.
Our new personnel liaison will be, open out too. You're welcome.
No, but seriously, is the position gonna be the same as the treasurer position pays currently, or I don't think we really talked about that, if I remember.
I guess I was, that's what I was envisioning, but I, I mean, I guess it's, it's up for discussion, I guess, if, if, if.
I know Michelle was looking into comparison um, positions.
I mean, I guess maybe if we have a hard time filling it, maybe that's something we you know, raise it up a little bit to entice some, somebody to, to volunteer for it.
But as far as the duties go, it's, it's the same kinda duties as what was on the.
Yes, absolutely. It's not gonna weigh up from anything that Kathy was doing, or anything like that, so.
It's not a higher expectation of attendance, you know, coming to the office or reviewing things or anything, right? Okay.
Nope.
Any other um, questions on that, Wolf, or anybody else?
No, I guess we just have to really stay on it, right, and no, I mean, the whole, the whole thing was driven by, by um, the idea that a lot of municipalities are going that route of appointed treasurers. And I, I thought I recall um, Michelle saying that there's almost a pool of treasurers that are basically, you know, we basically act as a treasurer for another district, or for another municipality. And, and one employee of another municipality would act as a treasurer for the.
and, and one employee of another municipality would act as a treasurer for the MBD, right, and that there, there was like this pool of, of people that are kind of filling, filling out for each other, filling in for each other. So I guess with Michelle being the one that kind of drove the idea, I would like to see her, then maybe in the next meeting, present what her plan was to make that happen. Because, you know, she's obviously got to be the main person behind it, so that would be good to have a little bit more. Actually, just, you just sparked a question for me. I'm, I'm, I was wondering if does this appointed position have to be a Merrimack resident? I don't think so. I, I was.
Just elected.
But, okay. No, that makes sense. But it probably would be a good idea to double-check on that, too. So.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's make this maybe an agenda item for the next meeting, just an update.
Yeah.
At least that. All right.
Then I do have actually something here for, that Wolf had actually had a question, an email out about main breaks and, and all of that. So we had twenty-four notifications go out last year. Three of that were mainline breaks. Three of the, another three of those were entrance leaks. One tank overflow. And another one, there was a, a break, but it was a construction strike. The rest of those would be for just changing water quality notifications that we had, you know, whether it was flushing or road construction, like stirred up some, some brown water, you know, valve exercising or street sweeping. So I guess I don't know, maybe it seems, because if you're getting the notifications, Wolf, that might, we might be having more breaks and that it seems like we're having more breaks, but we're really not that, that many, I guess. Yeah. I guess any break really, to me, is, is a little hard to, you know, I mean, obviously, a construction induced, you know, break, like somebody hitting a line, that's one thing, but in general, a water main break is something that I just have not seen really that much in other towns that are lifting, so. And, and I realize that I mean, we have a little bit of a concern, right, with the distribution systems age. Otherwise, we wouldn't be asking Underwood to look into a study for corrosion control, but I guess, I guess it doesn't sit well, well with me that we have them at all, to be honest. You know, it just seems that that we should be able to avoid those in the first place, and maybe I need to understand better where they come from, right? Is, is it really, you know, is, is it, is it ground that is shifting, or dirt that's shifting, or is it, is it really failure due to age, right, corrosion and? Well, you know, this last one we had, I'm not a hundred percent sure why, you know, what caused it. I mean, it was AC pipe. It was a collar that actually popped, so, but it was right on ledge. It was very rocky. I mean, I don't want to say it was sitting around a ledge, because we had room to, to work around it, but it was in rocky soil, so there probably was a shift or some tension on it. It just, it was just, it's time to go. The one, one of the last ones was Route Three. The time before that, I should say, that was an entrance leak. And that was just, that was a copper service. That's been in the ground probably for thirty years or more, and it just developed a pinhole and, and it was just, it was age on that one. Yeah, and I guess when I hear thirty years, right, alone, thirty, does it mean we're gonna see more and more of those that have been installed thirty years or longer, right? Is, is there gonna be a trend that, that's gonna develop from that? I guess I just, I just want to gauge a little bit where we stand with that. One thing with copper, it does depend on its, the soil that it's in. So generally, if you see one leak in copper, you're gonna have more. So typically, when we have the one leak, we'd like to change that whole line out and, and make that repair. So we, we, you know, we don't have a problem going down the road, down the road with that service. So again, for Route Three, that repair that was made, that was a temporary fix. When we go back in there to make, we're gonna make that repair. And, and, and again, it's, it's it's the soil, a lot of it's a soil. A lot of the town, I mean, it's the older neighborhoods are copper, some of them, but I would say the last twenty years, probably twenty-five years, we've been plastic, the HTP, HTP pipe, and we typically don't have that issue with that, so. It's, it's hard to say. If we're gonna I mean, we are gonna have other, other leaks in copper. I'm not saying we're not going to, but it's, it's seems like it's in, I don't say it's infrequent. Yeah, we have, we might have one, one a year or something. Ron, we'll, we'll talk about it anyway when, when Underwood comes back with their corrosion. Yeah, so I don't want to hold up the meeting, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
It is not an uncommon occurrence. I mean, I see it happen too. I, I don't know the frequency and the size of our system, how we compare to other water supplies. That would have to be somebody look into that, but I'm aware that there is software that's out there that tracks where the leaks are and what kind of pipe and all that. I, I don't know that we, I know we have software that we use, but I don't know if, if, that, if we're doing that, or if, if it has the utility to track the leaks and make some kind of, draw conclusions from, from that information using the software or not.
I don't know if it'll draw conclusions. I know we, we, we know where our leaks are, or have been, I should say.
Okay.
I don't believe it's gonna, it would give any conclusions or predict leaks or anything like that.
Is that being tracked in software, or is that just like paper copies of stuff?
It should be, should be being tracked on the GIS, so we should be able to have a map. That was, that's always been my goal, was to have it tracked in GIS. So if we wanted to bring up a map and see where leaks are, are trouble areas, that we'd be able to do that and, and make a determination if we need to replace a particular piece of pipe or
Right.
you know, when, when it comes to it.
We also have the summer that we put the Z-Corps out to, to do leak detection, and we usually get the leak detection grant from the state that they'll come out and do some leak detection too. So it's not going, you know, it's not like we're ignoring it or anything. There's, there's still things in place to keep moving forward on, doing the whole town.
Yeah, that, that's good. If we're at least tracking the location and the date of water breaks and things like that, even if we're not really doing anything with it right now, in the future, if we needed to compile that information, I think having it stored in a computer-based system would make it a lot easier to compile and then look at it and try to draw conclusions from it. So that, that's good to know that we're tracking it that way anyways.
And actually, we did get a, we did get award or granted the I just lost my train of thought. What the
Asset management.
Thank you, asset management grant. And to do some work on our asset management plan, and that is kind of what we're looking at, is to have a interactive interact with GIS and, and to be able to, you know, click here and see, share data between the two and, and have it really an easier I don't see it easy, but it needs your system to, to be able to manage and, and look up data and, and access to data. Was the goal.
Okay, good. So if there's no new business other than that, then superintendent report?
Just one thing, we're actually doing our lead-in copper sampling the week of May seventeenth. We've last week, the, the letters went out to the residents to the, the ones that we're going to drop the bottles off to notify. So we'll be doing our lead-in copper samples here pretty soon.
Okay. How are we doing with our well cleanings? Is, we, I know we did seven and eight. Pete reported.
Yep, well, two will be I think I heard he was gonna try to be there this week, but I think, believe he's gonna be over there next week for cleaning well two, and then from there, he's gonna go over to well three, which would probably work out be, because while we're doing, well, hopefully it doesn't take that long, but worst-case scenario, well, three will be down when we do our pump tests. We're not gonna be running for a week anyways, but I, it should be well before that.
Okay, yeah, it'd be good to get that in before, you know, the summer months come around again.
Yeah, I know, that's the goal.
Okay.
He was heading out to well two. I was hoping it was this week. Sounds like it's gonna be next week.
All right, thanks, Ron. So questions from the press and public we're at, at this point? I see three attendees. Looks like Lorraine has her hand up. If.
Go ahead, Lorraine. One last comment. I wanted to just get this on record for the public. You guys are doing a great job. There was a comment made earlier about your engineers about when you were in that negotiation stage with St. Albayne, trying to figure out, you know, what, what to do about the GAC and the O and M and everything that's in that agreement over remediation for wells four and five. So I have sat on a St. Albayne, what's called a community advisory committee, which means basically they don't take any of our advice or comments since November of two thousand and nineteen as a community liaison. And we have some folks from the MVD who are also invited to join that. In that process, I just feel as though, since that topic came up, I would like the public to know that from the beginning, I have strongly advocated for community access, community login. The town offered to record it so we could have it on empty, you know, Merrimack TV. That's been delayed, 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 and here we are a year and a half later. So we know how this goes with St. Albayne, right? It's like the song that never ends. It's just making us crazy. So over, what happens every month is they present information, they omit information, they tell a very biased, one-sided story, and I do a lot of reading and fact-checking on this stuff, as you may know, and I tend to play the role of bringing up, oh, you know, you didn't say anything about this, could you say more about that? And fill in the blanks as to what they're not saying. That usually doesn't get me anywhere, because they just kind of he and ha and say, oh, well, we don't really know what we're gonna do about that. So what struck me tonight is it was clearly stated here, and of course, it's true, that the work that was done over GAC and stuff, you know, you guys didn't know. How do we know about this stuff? We still are, as we said, in a big experiment. So the work that was done and the assistance that was given was clearly stated tonight as being done and helped by St. Albayne's engineers, the environmental experts that they have, the immense amount of money they have invested into their environmental experts. So on last week's CAC, we had this discussion again about the deal and the O and M and why, you know, this is problematic with breakthrough and things like this. It was clearly stated by their environmental expert on that call that all the work done was by the MVD engineers, and the MVD quote, "experts" were the ones that made all these recommendations, and they basically made this deal fully transparently based on the MVD experts. So I want to get that on record here for the hundreds of people I'm sure that watch this meeting, you know, just to somewhere, at least the satisfaction. That comment that they made, in the arrogance of that comment, that was the final straw for me. I resigned from the CAC as of that night. It was such a slap in the face and such an insult to the past commissioners, Ron and Jill and everybody that works at the MVD, and everything that we've been through since, well, the end of two thousand and fifteen for the MVD, the early twenty sixteen for the rest of us. So shame on St. Albayne, and what I heard from your engineers tonight absolutely contradicted what St. Albayne's experts told their community. So once again, no surprise to me, they clearly lied right to our faces. So for all it's worth, I want to get that on record here, and thank you once again.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Lorraine, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. I think we all do. Okay. So that, yeah, that's the end of the agenda. The next regular Board of Commissioners meeting is May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. If no one has any final parting comments, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion by Ken, second by Paul. We'll do a roll call. Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Paul?
I vote aye.
John?
Aye.
Wolf?
In favor.
And myself in favor as well. So that's five zero zero to adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for participating, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.